Everybody.
Recording in.
Sorry. I've met Brian Riley with elders. Generally speaking, we've assisted the township with financing matters. This also happens to be one of our areas of particular expertise, development and finance, and more specifically tax increment financing. It is a tool, a very powerful tool. It's one of the only development tools available to Wisconsin jurisdictions. TIP is rather unique with respect to towns, and so I'm going to walk through that. If there are questions that we're reviewing any of the information, I would suggest you just ask them as they come into your mind, and we don't necessarily need to wait to the end. So I'll start just by kind of giving a very basic overview of the mechanics of tax increment and what really happens. I think there's a lot of misperceptions often around this, and it's probably worth just kind of getting into just the very bare bones basics. It's not that hard to understand. Once I kind of walk you through that, I think you'll get a pretty good mental image of just the mechanics of how this becomes a tool to provide the ability to finance projects in a defined area. All right, so I'm going to go through the first two pages here and just kind of walk you through some high level details. The basic notion around tax increment financing is that growth pays for growth, right? If you need to extend infrastructure to an area to provide for development, if you need to redevelop an area, the ideal situation is to essentially have the taxes coming from that area, the property taxes, pay for those projects rather than put the burden on the general tax base. Oftentimes, that can be prohibitive. Local units of government are really the engines of development and growth, and this is really a partnership among all the jurisdictions with the overlying jurisdictions and taxing jurisdictions, really delegating some measure of authority. There's a lot of process involved, which we're not going to get into today. If you wanted to get more in depth at some point, that would be kind of the next discussion is to get into the gory details and the process associated with this. But fundamentally, on the second page, the, what we're trying to capture here is that when you establish a tax increment district, what you do is you define a geographical area, and it has to be contiguous. You can't just take parcels here, parcels there within the township and call that a tax increment district. Those tax parcels need to be contiguous, and there are some restrictions on how you craft the boundary. Again, that's getting into some very nuanced detail. We'll talk about purpose here as well in a little bit, but fundamentally, what you do at the time you create the district, you identify a base value for that district. That base value is essentially frozen in time and remains the same throughout the life of a TIF district. All of the taxing jurisdictions continue to collect their proportional share of the taxes on the base value. Once, once the TIF district is created and going forward, every incremental dollar of taxable value, the local jurisdiction collects 100% of the taxes. That's where the name comes from, tax increment. So the incremental tax revenue is really captured by, in this case, the township. Now, in this circumstance, it really goes into what I'll call a trust fund, so to speak, that can only be used for specific purposes. That incremental tax revenue that's, that's collected cannot be used for general governmental purposes, right? It can't augment your budget. It can't, there are certainly prohibitions, and what you can spend the money on, you create the district, you create a plan. And it talks about what are the eligible expenditures that you as a township are really interested in undertaking within that area. There's, within the statute, there is a list of prohibitions, but it's rather short. Now, the list of eligible projects we'll look at here later is, is pretty wide and varied. So you identify the projects, you establish what I'll call a budget, and it's certainly subject to amendment over time. But as you collect that incremental tax revenue on the increased value, those dollars are used to pay for the projects that are identified in the plan. Most of the time, it is infrastructure to serve an area. Many times, it can also be development related. So outright cash grants, assistance with certain aspects of a project. If you have conditions precedent at a site that are prohibitive to development or redevelopment, let's say you have bad soil, contamination, things of that nature that are going to increase the cost of a development project, there can be dollars brought to bear to make it feasible for somebody to come in and execute on a development plan. All right, so we could go on probably for an hour and talk about all of those things. But also understand too, that if you, you live inside the boundary, or if you are a property taxpayer inside the boundary of a tax increment district, and across the street, there was another piece of property that wasn't inside the tax increment district, you'd pay the same exact tax rate. If you had $100,000 property here and $100,000 property there, you want to pay the same. There's a uniform system of property taxation in the state of Wisconsin, and TIP does not change that. It's about where the tax revenue goes once it's paid. When you get your tax bill, you would, you would know, no difference if you were on one side of the line or the other. All right, and I apologize, there's kind of a duplication here between two and three. But ultimately, the objective on, as you see on slide three, is that once you close the district, all of that incremental value, but base value's still there, all the incremental value is then returned to the general tax base of all taxing jurisdictions. So whereas for the period of time, the local jurisdiction collects 100% of the incremental value, upon termination or closure of the TIF district, the value goes to all of the jurisdictions, all right? So there's this notion of what's called the but-for test, but for the use of this particular tool, you would really not realize any or the vast majority of that incremental value. All right, so in that circumstance, none of the jurisdictions are fundamentally harmed, and there is a benefit at the end to all of those jurisdictions through the enjoyment of the increase in the tax base. All right, so I'll pause there, see if there are any questions, because that's kind of the foundational aspects of tax increment financing. All right, we will move on. So cities and villages enjoy the broadest authority under law for the use of tax increment financing. There have been various pieces of legislation over time that have opened up TIP to townships, and they all have their kind of unique nuance. Some of them are pieces of special legislation, which have no broad applicability and had to do more with redevelopment in specific townships, more of the urban townships that have had major projects occur over time, and then went and sought out special legislation. In 2003 and 2013, there were more broad empowerment legislation, broader empowerment legislation that was brought to bear that opened things up to some degree, more so in 2013 than 2003. I'll point to a piece of legislation in 2005 that gave some broad authority, but required really a cooperative agreement with a neighboring city or village, which then also ultimately would lead to annexation of all or a part of a township. Most specifically, any part that's included in a tax increment district. That's only been used once, and it really had to do with, I think, the town of Dane and the cooperative agreement established with the city of Madison. And eventually, that area was annexed into the city of Madison. And you're obviously thinking, not looking to do that, so it's really not applicable to you, although you do have it available. The authority in 2003, we'll look at some of the specifics there in a second, gave some fairly broad authority, but it was really related to specific types of industry and projects. All right, we'll look at that here on the next page. In 2013, there was authority that largely looks like what is available to cities and villages offered to towns, but there are some caveats to that and underlying requirements, some of which you meet, but we'll talk about one important one here in just a moment. Slide five gets into the 2003 legislation, which is called Act 231. In this case, there is authority to create TIF districts, but it's specifically related to agriculture, really promotion of agriculture, forestry, manufacturing, tourism. And quite literally, these are the things that you can assist with from a tax increment financing perspective. So we fielded some phone calls over time where, say, a large ag business is either expanding or coming into a location, and the current infrastructure just can't serve like truck traffic or things of that nature. And so this is a tool that a town could use to facilitate something like that. And the rest of these kind of fall within the broader categories of what can be leveraged in terms of the use of tax increment financing. All right, so it is rather limiting in its scope, even though that the tool is available to you. You have to follow these guidelines with respect to the private parties that are really going to operate in that specific area. I guess I'll also point out as well, there are currently two town TIP districts in the entire state of Wisconsin. So this is not a broadly used tool by townships across the state. That doesn't mean there's been two ever. That's just what is out there right now. Some have been closed here too far, but some of them also fall within these very specific pieces of legislation that were opened up in the past. So if we look at what is probably considered the more broad legislation that was done in 2013, there are some conditions precedent that you need to satisfy. So there are a handful of requirements. You satisfy two of them, one being a population of 3,500 or greater and a valuation in excess of $500 million. So clearly, I think you're aware, you, you meet both of those requirements. So this is in your purview, so to speak. Now, the biggest qualifier is the last one. I'm sorry, not, not last, but the next page, and clearly we can point to the last year that satisfied both of those tests. On the next page, there's a section, there's a reference in the statute that speaks to a requirement related to sanitary sewer, all right? So that's really laid, this is almost the exact language that's laid out in the law. It's a little nebulous, and I'm not going to proclaim to be an attorney. So there's some level of interpretation that would be required in this regard, and there's probably not a lot of, say, case law to rely on or other sorts of administrative findings, just because there's a lack of precedent to a large degree. So, but fundamentally, I don't need to read these verbatim, I'll understand over them. But what it fundamentally says is that you either have to have existing sanitary sewer service or provide it prior to any improvements being made to the land within the boundary area. And it, you know, the statute, section 283 goes through kind of a laundry list of requirements related to, you know, discharge requirements, et cetera, et cetera. And there's, there's a concept of facility, but it doesn't really meaningfully define what a facility is. So I'm not entirely sure it speaks to having a treatment plant, so to speak, or some sort of treatment. I work with a number of villages that use, say, cluster septic systems for like commercial areas and whatnot, and we've used TIF to expand or install all sorts of facilities to, to treat wastewater. So we'd have to do a little more research, I suspect, to kind of dig into what it truly means to provide sanitary sewer service. That section of law really just talks about what you have to adhere to, et cetera. I'm sure engineer, engineer could kind of talk to that as well, but it's not entirely clear when you read it what method of sanitary sewer service meets these requirements. But I'm guessing it's rather broad, but that's just an educated guess. So this one to me is probably the one you need to pay the most attention to. If you had an area that you were anticipating is suitable for certain kinds of development, which we'll get into here in a moment, this condition is the one that you need to pay the most attention to, because we, we passed the first two tests. This is really the third one, and how you do that needs some, a little bit of additional research. Questions?
No.
All right, we'll move on here. There are various types of tax increment districts. All of them have some of their own unique characteristics. There are five primary, one of which is called an environmental remediation district. There are not many of them currently in place in the entire state of Wisconsin. I think there's been one town, quote unquote, E.T.I.D. ever. There have been a number of them over time, and a lot of them have been dissolved, and they exist really for one specific purpose, and that's to remediate environmental contamination. The caveat to those is that oftentimes, you can't incur costs prior to the creation of a TIF district and consider them eligible expenditures that you can use the tax increment revenue to recover. In the case of E.T.I.D.s, you can spend the money first and then go back in time to recover prior costs. So I'm not going to get into that one any further than that, because it's a rare occasion where they are even used. The most common, out of the first three laid out there, you also see the conservation or rehabilitation district. So you have mixed use, you have industrial, blighted area, and the conservation rehab. There's some differentiation there in terms of both of the amount of time and the conditions precedent required in terms of, when I look at the area, what are the findings we need to make in order to establish the district? So mixed use is suitable for at least two of three uses. Commercial, resident, combination of industrial, commercial, and residential. At least 50% by area must be suitable for those purposes, two of those three. All right, the rest of it doesn't really matter a whole lot. In fact, that's the case for, for all of these. The qualifier there is that it's really the only district that allows you to spend dollars and consider them tax increment eligible for residential purposes. Now, in this case, residential, there are some qualifiers. No more than 35% of the entire boundary area can be considered newly platted residential development. There are also some density requirements related to that. And, and so those stand over the entire timeframe of the TIF district too. A mixed-use district has a maximum term of 20 years. That's the period of time that you are able to collect the tax increment revenue. In all occasions that we walk through these, there's also what's called an expenditure period, the, the time period within which you can spend dollars that are eligible to be recovered from the tax increment. That's always going to be five years from the maximum date of termination. So in a 20-year district, you have 15 years to spend dollars, the last five years. You can't spend new dollars if you've issued debt. You can continue to service your debt over the entire life. That's not considered new spending once you're obligated. So it's just that last five years where I would say you're in like runoff mode, right? You're just collecting revenues to recover your prior costs at that point. Industrial districts are similar in terms of the mixed use, but again, the precondition there is that you have at least half by boundary area suitable and zone for industrial purposes. The other 50% or less, again, can be pretty much anything. So the requirement is that at least 50% by area suitable for that purpose. There is not the ability to support residential development as an eligible expenditure in industrial districts. You have to use it for that purpose, promoting industrial development. Blighted area, there's some fairly wide latitude in terms of what you can spend the dollars on. The notion is that you're remediating blight or blighted conditions. It's really not meant for, say, developing green space, right? Or, you know, you know, bare land, essentially. So in this case, you've got some requirements around blighted conditions and some findings that need to be made in that regard, and at least 50% by area needs to be considered blighted. Again, the other half or less really has no distinction in terms of what you need to care about. That is a 27-year district. It's longer, because typically you find these sorts of districts created in already developed areas. That is how they end up being blighted, right? Just over time, you get blighted conditions, and so you've already got existing value in that base value that I talked about, and oftentimes demolition may be required. So essentially, you're eating into the tax base. So if you've got a half a million dollar building, that's part of the base value, and you knock it over, now you've got to build something of at least a half a million dollars to get back to zero. So you're not really collecting incremental taxes. So you need a longer runway to really make those cash flow and make them feasible. The same applies to a conservation rehab district in terms of the timing. They're similar in some regard. You'll see many of them. But again, you've got the 50% by area need of conservation or rehabilitation. Again, only the mixed use provides an avenue to use tax increment dollars to pay for residential development projects. All right, questions?
Can a TID district go bankrupt within itself?
There are occasions where districts do not recover their costs, but those dollars get spent, and they have to come from somewhere. So a number of things could happen. There are different ways to fund or finance the project costs. And so you may have, say, the general fund has cash, and the TIF district does not. Think about it as its own fund, right? A dedicated fund segregated from all other funds. You know, the, it's like you're the bank, essentially, lending to yourself. And so one fund lends to another. So the general fund may have cash instead of going out borrowing money. General fund transfers half a million dollars to a TIF district, and by the time you get to the end, maybe there's still $100,000 that hasn't been recovered. The district doesn't go bankrupt, but the general fund does not give back that $100,000. It got back 400, but not the full $500,000. So it's another fund that bears the cost at that point. Now, there, that can be a problem potentially for that fund. So it does require some level of monitoring. The other scenario would be, let's say, you went out and borrowed the money, and at the end of 20 years, you found that you just have not produced, you're going to pay the debt one way or another, right? And the people that own the debt, they don't care that you're using TIF revenue to support it. They just know that you pledged your general obligation, which is your taxing authority, your general taxing authority. So you're going to come up with the money to pay the debt. It just came from somewhere else other than the TIF district. And so if the TIF district doesn't generate enough revenue to pay all the principal and interest, another funded. And again, in that case, it's that fund that will bear the net burden between the revenue and the expense. So again, that could be problematic for the town as a whole or any other.
I wanted the board to hear that.
Yeah, so it's not a panacea, but there are also occasions where you may be fine with that, right? If you've got a major infrastructure project, and you really want to leverage a tax increment district to the greatest degree possible, knowing that it may not, that may be okay, right? Because at least that development paid for the maximum amount it could without the rest of the tax base bearing the full burden of that. So I don't want to say that it's totally uncommon for a TIF district to not fully recover its costs. As long as you know what's going on and you're able to plan for it, that may be the okay outcome. Ideally, a TIF district generates enough revenue that all costs will have been recovered, and in fact, perhaps a surplus is generated.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, go ahead.
All right, eligible project costs. This list could be way more extensive than this, but just kind of very common, right? So almost any sort of infrastructure, any kind of public works improvements, any utilities improvements generally, and that can even be more of the private utilities, right? If you've got a business that requires telecommunications or other things that maybe a governmental jurisdiction doesn't provide, you could potentially contribute to that. Financing costs, that includes cost of issuance, that includes interest expense. You can buy land, you can buy land and sell it for less than you paid for and recover the difference. You can give the land away and recover the acquisition cost. What you can't do is buy land, use the TIF to recover the expense, sell it for the same or more, and double dip. If you sell it and you take in money, that's a non-project cost at that point. You can't use both TIP, TIP revenue and the land sale proceeds and bank it, keep both, right? So one will replace the other. Any professional services costs, right? There's costs of keeping a district open. You have to pay the state a fee every year to certify the value and keep it open. You have to sometimes pay professionals. You may pay your auditor to do additional work. We provide some services, because there's some annual reporting requirements, and we help our clients go through that. If you've got costs that benefit more than just a TIF district, the TIF district would pick up a prorated amount. You can enter into development agreements and provide outright cash grants. You could provide things like forgivable loans, low-interest loans, you name it. It's kind of available to you. The caveat with things like cash grants or other forms of development incentives is that, under statute, you must enter into a development agreement in order to affect that. That's just good practice anyways, but because people weren't doing it, it was codified in the law. So now it is a requirement. You would end up probably doing that no matter what. Relocation costs are available. There's also the ability to spend money within a half a mile of the boundary area, which can be very beneficial. And that's kind of a, that's a newer section of law, but is probably outside of the scope of what we're discussing here today.
Okay.
There are prohibited costs, and in fact, that's really what's spelled out on the statute. Rather than setting out every eligible expenditure, it really talks more about what you can't do with tax increment revenues. Basically, any, any, any governmental facility, like administrative building, public safety buildings. You can buy equipment, right? So if you think about it logically, if you have like a hotel come in and it's, you know, five, six stories and requires a ladder truck, the tax, the rest of the taxpayer shouldn't have to bear that burden. It was that project that required you to go and buy that apparatus. And so there is the ability to pay for equipment. If you need more equipment because, or, or the cost of staff time to service an area, you can prorate or allocate some of the cost of equipment and staff to either administer a TIF district or to serve the area. If you have utilities or other sorts of enterprises that are primarily financed only with user fees, there's a prohibition there. You can't just all of a sudden say, hey, you know what, we're $100,000 short in the budget. You know, we need to hire somebody. We're going to use TIF revenue to do that. That is prohibited. You can't augment your, or supplement your operating budget or your capital budget, unless it's specifically related to a TIF district. We talked about the newly planted residential and some of the prohibitions around that, but also what is allowed. There's a whole discussion around some of the specifics around supporting residential development using TIF. And if you ever wanted to go that direction, we would get into that detail at that particular time. I talked about the expenditure period at the time. We were going through the terms, so I don't need to go through this in, in super great detail, but just understand 20-year district, you get 15 years to spend money. 27-year district, you get 22 years to spend money. The, the limited uses that we talked about at the front end, those districts are a little bit different under law than the ones that we looked at in grid, because they are so rarely used. I didn't get into the specific details, but if that were the direction you want to go, we would talk chapter and verse through all of the little bits of nuance associated with those older sections of law that date back to the early 2000s. All right, so just closing things out here. There's really one of two ways you get to the end of the life of a TIF district. If you've recovered all your costs, especially if you're outside of the expenditure period where you can't spend more money, you close the district, terminate it. You, you don't have to let it run to the end. You can terminate it at any time after the board creates it. Now, ideally, you're going to want to recover all your costs, so it probably wouldn't be wise to terminate a district before that happens. But you can terminate it at any time, right? So either it reaches its maximum life under statute, or you identify that you've collected enough revenue to pay for every check you wrote in that, for that, that district over the period of time it had been open. If you can't spend more money, what other choice do you really have, right? You're just collecting additional tax increment revenue for no real stated purpose. I mean, you're really hard in the other jurisdictions at that point. So when you close the district, that tax base returns to all the jurisdictions. There's some timing issues there that need to be paid mind to and are probably outside of the, the framework of this discussion. If you've accumulated a surplus or an excess balance, right? You've paid for all your costs, and there's still money left over, a final accounting is done, and whatever's there is distributed to all the taxing jurisdictions, including the township, based up, and it's prorated based upon the last statement of taxes. Because what you've been doing the whole time is the other jurisdictions have given you the authority to collect all the money on their behalf, and you're kind of holding it in trust. And so it makes logical sense, but then if you have excess, part of that is their money, right? And so it's distributed to all of them, and it could be a windfall, it could be a nominal amount. And schools have a little bit of rules around what they have to do with that, but everybody else just goes into the general fund. You can do with it what you want from that point forward. There's no strings on it. It's, it's surplus funds, just like any other that you might have. If you have not recovered your costs, like you said, those costs are borne by another fund. You paid for them somehow, and then that fund is going to bear the brunt of the rainfall. Right, so that's what I prepared for you, but I'm happy to get into any further detail. Bear the brunt of the rainfall, right? So, um, that's what I prepared for you, but I'm happy to get into any further detail. Uh, this is stuff we do certainly every day. I recognize the town, town working on the law is a little bit more complicated. Um, and, um, imperfect to some degree, um, but I, I can get into much detail if you'd like for the most part.
I know the board wanted to have this information as kind of a high level. Um, talk to us that we knew what this meant. Because obviously we're starting to see some pressure. At the interchange of companies wanting to come in and of course, somebody somewhere is going to say this. And I thought it was best for the board to at least have this overview. And the board agreed when we had this meeting and talked about this, that we needed to have some information. Are we ready to go forward at this time? Obviously not, but at least this gives us. An idea, and as these pressures continue, it'll give us something to think about as to where we may go in the future. Does anyone wanna say anything else on that?
Yeah, so since you're here, we're spending a little time on that. So you, you brought up the. The infrastructure piece on, uh, let's say wastewater. So if. The. Obviously, there's nothing out there, okay? So then, would we have to create? A public utility to. Operate a wastewater treatment, develop it and have those costs to build that TIS, TID district?
I don't think so. Um, in fact, uh, that reference to, uh, uh, say a, a utility facility. That would otherwise only be paid from user fees, um, it's. We've seen TIF be used for things like improvements, extensions, right, to an unserved area or, let's say it needs per, you know, um, resizing. Because of whatever industry, it's generally not used to create.
Okay.
Build a treatment plant or even a replacement.
I just wanted everybody to.
Um, but again, the devil's in the details. You really have to pour over that section of law to have a better understanding of what is truly meant by. Um, sanitary sewer service and what. There, there's not really a definition of facility, but I'm sure it's buried somewhere.
Sure.
Cross-reference and, and people have figured this out over time. Um, so you have to do a little diligence and homework on that front, but. As I mentioned, there are other means of treatment, um, right? So, um. We, we have been able to use tax increment in other jurisdictions to provide for other means of conveyance in this case, so.
And, and then one, one scenario, and then I'll be done. So the scenario here is that we find a couple interests at larger parties that are. Willing to sign up. We're, we've, we're developing this TID district. But then the whole rest of it falls on its face. Nobody else's interest. How do we look as a, how do we survive that as a township?
Let me just start by saying, you know, part of our role, we're involved in things like this, is running feasibility analysis on your behalf. So. Um, there's a lot of perfunctory stuff that has to happen, like creating the plan. The statute tells you what has to be in the plan. Um, the more interesting part is, okay, we established a list of projects you wanna do. And we look at the developable area, um, perhaps with your engineers or anybody else. We get a sense as to, well, here's how much you could really get in value. Cause you're not, you're not gonna put in, you know, five hundred million dollars of projects into a TIF district. Um, with no hope of ever cash flowing that amount, so.
That's why I'm here.
Yeah, what we do with our clients is, um. We get realistic about, all right, you need, let's just think about infrastructure, cause that's just the easy, you need. Five million dollars of infrastructure to serve this area. What do you need in value to support that and recover that cost over the maximum term of the district? There are extensions available, but. Your best to not have to use them. Um, that's kind of its own thing, uh, in and of itself. So. We would help you understand what is the risk profile of making this decision. Okay, let's go forward. Let's install the infrastructure. Um, your attorney would then potentially help you craft a development agreement that would say, all right, we'll do this. You business, you're gonna have a guaranteed minimum assessed value over the life of this TIF district, such that. If you build your project and it comes in a less value than you anticipated, we're gonna send you a bill. Or the difference between what you guaranteed and what your actual tax payment is. Now, that's not the same as paying taxes because. Um, that's far more powerful. You put a lien, um, and the county's gonna pay you one way or another, even if they don't pay their taxes. Um, they're gonna clear it and hold the, um, delinquency, but the. Net difference, that's contractual obligation. So you're gonna have to, you know, send them a bill and. You stand in line with everybody else at some point if they're having problems. So there's always some level of risk and it's hard down to help you understand that. And get comfortable with making decisions, whether it be at the outset or over the entire life of the district. And then it's a function of monitoring every single year and perhaps even at the initiation of different projects. We kind of put it all back out there. Let's look at it where you stand right now. What do you need and, and further revenue to recover all your costs? What does this project now mean in relationship to the entire district? Have you accumulated cash that you could bring to bear project costs? How much do you need to potentially borrow for? Would you be comfortable advancing money from the general fund to paying yourself back, even perhaps with interest? All of that stuff is what is discussed amongst the decision makers, so that you have a complete understanding of what you're really getting into at that point in time.
And I, I can confirm what, what Brian is saying, uh, with respect to the development agreements. Uh, we use TIF a lot up in New Richmond and work with Brian's counterpart, Sean Lentz. Um, and New Richmond has really used TIF to its benefit on the south end of town. Um, to incentivize jobs, job, job creation. So it's, it's not just. The development agreement's not just a mechanism to make sure that you get the value. But it's also an opportunity, if you were to look at, you know, those areas of, of town and you want to try to bring in the right type of, of business. To say that we do offer TIF and there are some incentives if, if you are going to, uh, potentially show some, some job creation. And then if you don't, then there's the opportunity to charge back as well. So, you know, getting your arms around the, the process is important. Deciding that you wanna use it as, as a tool, if you do, moving forward, uh, is, is important, but then. You know, really working with, with Brian and his team to determine what those opportunities are and, and how you use it for your, for your town, um, is really critical.
So then the piece that you brought up about employment, what is the math between? The value of per employee towards the.
Well, so New, New Richmond has, has more of a comprehensive policy in terms of they have some land that they sell. And then they, they sell it cheaper, uh, for, in exchange for some job creation. So it's a little different than, than what you're talking about here. Um, but just when you think about the, the potential use and, and how you frame it up. You know, most, most communities don't just say, here's TIF, we're gonna give it to you for nothing, right? I mean, there's some purpose behind it. Um, and there's, there's more of a.
Jobs, because then they bring homes.
Typical, yeah, typically.
Progress comes.
Right. And, and so I think the other thing that's, that's key that, that Brian said. You know, talking about potentially using shared septic, you know, obviously you're not gonna build facilities in the, in the town, but there may be, if you're looking to. Um, generate some development in, in particular areas. And, uh, there's kind of a future plan for how properties might share community septics or share community services. I think that's the sort of thing that you start to look at, kind of comprehensively with those landowners in, in those areas to say. You know, how would we envision this all coming together? And to get ahead of it with, with these guys, to say, how do we, how do we plan for it? And what kind of a, a, a program or a structure would we like to have in place? So then you can start to think about the types of businesses that you want, you know, roll out that program and, and really use it for global planning. As opposed to being behind the eight ball and letting development come to you as we know it's gonna move in this direction.
Thank you.
Anyone else with a question for him? Go ahead, Rick.
Just have one. Do we have the authority to tell the landowner? We want a motel here. We don't want. Uh, Cub Foods or what authority do we have to tell the current landowner? This is what we want.
Well, you have, you have zoning and, and you have your comprehensive plan. And within your zoning code, and I haven't studied it in detail yet, but. You, you have certain uses that are permitted and certain uses that are, are conditionally permitted. There are a lot of communities that will kind of identify the types of uses that they want for properties. And then put the word out to the EDCs and developers and whatnot. That they're looking for those types of businesses to, to come in. In, in a lot of respects, and I don't know how far you go in terms of your conditional use permits. Um, you, you can't tell landowners exactly what you wanna spend from a broad-based zoning perspective. If a use comes in. And it's permitted under your code, it's, it's going to be permitted, you know? However, if you want to offer, if you wanna create a TIF district and offer up. Uh, a tax increment incentive, then you have more control. Because you're not just required to create that district or offer that, that incentive. So, you know, step one is, is really identifying what types of uses you want to permit and promote in certain areas. And then step two is, is really working with the landowners, you know, making it clear what, what you'd like to see. A kind of, you know, promoting that, that overall plan. And you're kind of a blank canvas right now. You know, you've got a lot of land out there that's available, that. People are, are interested in, and now is the time to, to put your plan together and kind of chart that course as to where you wanna be.
The, the next level of control in that regard is employer plan.
Yeah.
So, you have a lot to say and, and what happens there, but it can be that way. There's a lot of control regardless, especially when you involve tax increment. Cause you're gonna sit across the table from someone else.
So, so the, this is a great discussion this evening because. I took it upon myself to contact one owner and ask him if he was notified, told. Educated about this situation. He said, no, nothing. Ain't even heard of it. Still gonna continue to farm it.
Right.
End of story. So, that's kind of your answer.
And, and I think that we're all there saying that that's probably the direction it's going to go. But we also know inquiries are being made and people are talking and it helps for the board to have some information. And that's really what this was about, was just gathering some information. I don't wanna stop anyone from doing what they're doing right now, but that can change. We know that can change.
Yeah, I applaud you because being an actionary, uh, puts you at a disadvantage, uh, the time is your enemy. To a great degree, everything has to process and time. If, uh, if at any point. That we're by a great taxi district, you're talking about, uh. Two to three months, uh, process. The quickest you could possibly get it done is two months, and I would argue. Um, for a township, it's probably one that doesn't have a lot of familiarity. You wanna give yourself as much time as possible. And then there are also. Date, we didn't go through some of the very new law stuff where we live, a little bit technical, so there's some dating. Uh, along calendar that is important. And so we would help you understand what that means, craft a calendar. Um, try to be as advantageous as possible. There's a lot of light work that has been just to get to the preliminary stages.
Yeah.
And to begin to craft the plan and maps and you name it, so, um, it, it's involved, there's no doubt, but, um. You know, when the time comes, if it comes, you'll feel better for having known some of the basic aspects. I love this as well. And, um, without getting to a bunch of details, well, we, we do have some educational stuff, although it goes well beyond this. Uh, that's absolutely free.
Perfect.
On our website, it's, uh, we have a YouTube channel, uh, we've done, um, you know, webinars and. We're live at the time that we recorded, but if, if you wanna know more, there is additional, um, opportunity for you to do that if possible.
Well, thank you very much for coming. The board appreciates this information. Yes, sir.
One question. Um, when I'm reading through this on the two thousand and three legislation, this is slide five for those who are still, have it up is. There are a list of, um, kind of approved or is this just a condensed list? This isn't necessarily. So anything that would fall outside of something like the manuf-. The, the reason I'm asking is because it calls out manufacturing, forestry, agricultural and tourism. But inside the TIF district, uh, I don't understand how that would fall into a commercial.
It's, you're, there's really, there's really two sets of. Dashatory provisions that you could live under. One is kind of the old rules and one is the new rules.
Okay.
Uh, I would argue you would do whatever you can to avoid the old rules, uh, because they're very limiting and prohibitive.
Okay.
In their context, so, um, the one that you have to really think about is sewer aspect. Uh, once, if you can, if you can avail yourself of that. Uh, right, if you can comply with that, you can avail yourself of a much broader frame more within which to operate. If you have to live under the two thousand and three rules. Very limiting, very specific, very focused to their stated and intended purpose. And there's a, like a whole other subset of rules. That aren't applicable to the broader rules that are available under the twenty thirteen legislation.
Okay, and then, uh, I, the only other one that came to mind was, was there a, you'd say there was a, a minimum size of. Um, contiguous TIS, TIF district, but what is it like, uh, applicable under the specific rules that you follow and then their purpose? Um, or is there just a set state minimum and maximum size that we would have to abide by?
It's a minimum of one tax parcel, right? You could have it as focused at that if you wanted. There's no size. It's just one tax parcel, you could create a tax increment district. Um, the maximum size is a limitation that relates to value within. The base value of the boundary area in relationship to your total equalized value. I argue the thing would have to be very large to run afoul of those limitations. You're not gonna do that anyways. You're gonna focus on the specific area.
Yeah.
Um, it's not a lot of sense in capturing areas, but when I talk about time. A, a lot of the time, then crafting the boundary, um, it's kind of like, uh, you have to check exercise, right? Um, so you, you kind of have your initial area and then we'll look at a map to go, what all, what if all these adjacent parcels, what do you think's gonna happen there? Is there anything there? There are existing improvements on there because nothing's ever gonna touch it, why included? Fair lane and then developed could spill into it. Maybe we grab it now. You can amend the boundaries four times over the life of the district. There are also rules associated with that, but you have, once you do it, it's not chiseled into granite. You can amend the plan to add projects unlimited times. Uh, you go through a process to do that. It's not free. Uh, you can add territory, which you can only do it four times. You can subtract territory that counts for the four times. So. Anytime you have thoughts and ideas, you leverage your professional resources to kind of walk you through. All the thoughts and implications around making certain decisions.
Thank you.
Okay. Darla has her hand up. What did you wanna say, Darla?
How does this affect our comprehensive plan?
It doesn't affect the comprehensive plan because the board is just getting information at this point. It has more to do with zoning than it does the comprehensive plan. And the comprehensive plan, zoning follows the comprehensive plan.
There will, there will be a statement in the project plan that what's in the plan really complies.
Yeah.
With your comprehensive plan or, you know.
Yeah.
At least, you know, working towards.
Because the zoning reflects the plan.
Largely, yes. You could change the zoning, um, in some cases prior to or during the life of a TIF district. Industrial is pretty prohibitive in that regard. Once the zone industrial, you put it in a district that has to stay that way.
Yeah.
Uh, over its life, but, um, more to the point, you will make a finding in your resolution that you. Adopt or create a TIF district will have a statement in there that says, we're complying with our plan as a result of adopting this.
Okay. So thank you very much for coming. I appreciate it. The board, I'm sure appreciates it and we can move on.
I, did you say there's two towns that are currently have an active TIF or did I misunderstand that statement?
There are, there are two active town TIF districts. I can't tell you if it's two towns or one town with two TIF districts. I can find that out.
I'm just curious which towns it is, as opposed to, we already know the city of New Richmond has it. I would be interested in specifically towns, not.
I can, so, so that triggers a good question, maybe. The chair can answer this. What did Troy do down there?
Troy does not have TIF that I know of.
Were that. Big garage complex didn't turn that into a TID? That's private?
I think that's private.
So, that's a private project.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
We were all over.
I know. Any on this side.
Thank you.
All right, thanks so much. We're gonna have to move on, but we appreciate you coming.
All right.
Thank you, thank you. All right, Todd Dillon, you're up. Up to the microphone, sir. Nice to see you. It's been a while. And your drive is Todd's, um, contract and his letter to us. And this is our review of him since he was not able to be here at our last meeting. How are things going? And we get your reports all the time, so we know you're busy.
Slow down a little bit.
Yeah.
So, plenty of calls.
So can I just go through this really quick? Your contract is pretty much the same as it was before, except for some changes in compensation. You're still doing the same. Um, reporting the same inspection, inspecting.
We, uh, work hard to keep the residential.
We work hard to keep the residential fee the same. Personal part of the little tip. Twenty-five cents. For inspection costs. Otherwise, everything else in the contract serves all that.
Except you decrease the reinspection fee.
Correct.
Yeah. Anyone want to speak to Todd about his work this past year and where we are at on things? It's up to the board to talk with him.
Uh.
Go ahead, Chris.
I'm happy that you got as far as me hearing on the street, seems like I haven't heard any complaints, and I wanted to say good job. Sounds like you corrected them from the last time. Thank you.
Anyone else? And go ahead.
What, what does a typical average two cents per square foot mean to a?
Commercials?
Um.
It doesn't seem like very much.
It just basically covers the addition.
Inflation.
Yeah. But it doesn't, it's not. It's just basically two cents. Hundred thousand.
Anything else from anyone? How many staff do you have now?
Uh, we must.
There's four, so three inspectors and one in the office or, or two inspectors and one in the office? Okay. Anyone else have any questions for him? Are you happy in the office with the reporting and everything that's coming your way? Okay. Do you have anything for us? Okay, good. I did see your email that came through. We did give it to the attorney, so hopefully the two of you can talk about that. Yeah, and get that straightened out because he has another letter too, so it keeps, the saga continues.
Yeah.
Yeah. If there's nothing from anyone else, does anyone want to make a motion to approve his new contract? And this contract is just for an increase on those three items to him. It does not change the fees that we're charging people. Yeah.
I make a motion that we accept the contract for all crew inspections moving forward.
Is there a second?
Second.
And this is a two-year contract? Okay. Yeah, for two years.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions concerning it? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. That passes. I don't have anything else to add to it unless anyone else does. If you filled out your sheet, you can give them to the clerk, and if you wish to see them, you can sure ask her for for them. We appreciate you coming tonight and hanging out with us till after seven. Oh, that's good. I'm glad you. Well, we just needed to get some information, and this is the night to do it. This is how it works. Thank you so much. We appreciate it. All right. Next up is Elizabeth Anderson Revocable Trust CSM, and I know Doug, that's you. Do you want to do the microphone? You want to be here? I mean, that one works. Okay, just put it close to you. You can sit that way. If you get rambunctious, I put you up there. Okay, yeah, just very close to yours. It should be on. It's green. There you go. Okay, go ahead with the CSM.
Okay. You guys have seen this as a concept plan. You know where the property is. I'm dirt. What's before you is we're creating this lot two, which is the balance of the property that lies east of Riverview Acres Road, except for a small parcel that's going to be attached to the existing lot that is on the corner of Highway thirty-five and Riverview Acres Road, which is represented by, you should have another map, Lot One.
Okay.
So in essence, Lot One is getting a little bigger than it was.
Yep.
And Lot Two is an entirely new lot.
And you're doing these on, do I understand this correctly? These are separate CSMs?
Correct. So since, since Lot One is already in existence, the town needs to kind of, so it's going to be one of those line adjustment maps.
That's the line adjustment.
That's the line adjustment map, so the town needs to prove it technically, just that it meets zoning.
Right.
The Lot Two is an entirely new lot, so that's.
That's the CSM. That's sideways, but that's a CSM.
Correct.
I said that for everyone's benefit because I kind of knew that, but I thought we needed to make sure we all know. So we're approving, if we choose to, we are approving Lot Two. And then separately, we would be approving the lot line adjustment for Lot One.
Correct.
Because there are two separate things.
There are two separate things, and there are two separate tax parcels.
Right. And you do have information in your drive from the family. And I think I have to look what else is there. Sorry. So that's all in the drive. Does anyone on the board have any questions? Regarding this, they'll both access off of Riverview Acres, and right now there isn't access to Lot Two that exists.
There's an access to Lot One.
One that exists. Okay, sorry.
The plan is to move that access down to the common lot line between these two lots, and they'll share an access.
Yeah, you can see it right there in the middle of the map, right there in that corner. Anything from anyone on the board that they wish to ask? Because this has been something that's been a little contentious. Is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak? You can come up to that microphone and turn it on if you wish. Otherwise, is everyone? Okay, with this, you want to come up, Kevin? Just hit the button on it. Right now it's red, so if you just hit it to green, I'd appreciate it. It's right on that, right on the top side. No. There it is. Now you're set.
Evening.
Good evening.
Back in 2001, there was a proposed lot that was presented to the town board up in Riverview Acres Road. And the town board at that time wanted the road upgraded. So now we're going to set a precedent to switch that because there's a lot of people that wanted to expand and options of splitting their lines.
Okay.
That would be a new precedent and be a precedent of one of a private road. And just, and I'm okay with whatever you decide. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else?
Doug, is this the exact same paperwork you had at the Plan Commission?
Yes.
And just to clarify, this entrance road from thirty-five in to where it splits is owned by the family.
Correct.
And then when it splits, it's owned by either of associations. No, yes.
The road?
Yeah.
So the road will can be, continue to be owned, in this case, Dyson's proposing to purchase, and he will own, be titled to the actual road bed.
Yes.
And easement.
Because it was owned by his parents.
Correct.
Okay.
So the title's going to stay in the family to the road bed. The use as a private road and all the easements associated with.
Are still there. That's what I wanted to make sure that everyone was clear on that. Yeah, so you can introduce yourself on the microphone if you want to step up.
I'm chairman for, president for Rahab River View Acres.
Yeah.
We work with them, and we have an agreement as to where the accesses are, and we approve the move going here.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone from the board have any questions, or do you have anything you would like to add, Lee? Are you going to have to turn it on? Sorry.
Man, chair members of the board are we, we submitted our memo, and I assume the Plan Commission reviewed that. You know, the only two issues that we just wanted to alert was the potential someday for a trail. We realize, however, that there's no, nothing in the plan at this point. But we always look at that trail plan to make sure that people are at least having that on their radar. And then the second one was the town's code does ask that wetlands be located on the CSM. So we alerted, we alerted the Plan Commission to that. So I'm not aware of the final disposition of, you know, either of those issues of Plan Commission, but those were the main, main comments, which are fairly minor.
And you did include that. Is that what's up there? That's that second map? On Lot Two?
That is.
That shows the elevations.
That shows, yeah, that's, so that's showing that there's the net project buildable areas is being met. I did add plan, I'm not sure which map you have in your drive. Now, I Plan Commission, I did bring forward revised Lot Two that does show the wetlands.
Okay.
Address that in the memo.
Do you have extra copies of that?
I got a couple of them here.
Why don't you hand out one to each table here? Well, I'm going to get up and get it. You can't, you can't get through.
Thank you.
All right, anything else from anyone? The one thing I would state is that we did talk about having something put on this CSM that would state that in the future, if this was subdivided, they would be responsible for bringing the road up to standards. Since they're not increasing the driveways, they're still at the one. Is that something I might, it's a little small for me to look at. Did you include that on there, that improvements?
That effect on the map.
And it'll be up to the board whether they want to include that or not. Anything else from anyone?
So are we, are we, are we being asked to approve both Lot One and Two?
The first motion has to be for two only because that's the CSM. Lot One is a lot line adjustment.
So as of right now, there's no, no property ID, there's no property number that it could have been assigned.
No, because it was all altogether. One was separate already, and two is, you can explain it, Doug.
So I think, so the property ID number for the new lot, I'm trying to remember how it existed on the text role myself. I have it on, the one that's on the application was correct.
Yes, that's what it was.
I remember we had this discussion at Plan Commission. There was two different numbers.
So the application has zero three zero two zero six five ninety zero zero zero. That's the correct one for this CSM.
And that's for both slots or just the one lot because the other one becomes a lot line adjustment?
Right, the other one is just a lot line adjustment, so there's no application for that. You have another one on the agenda tonight.
So we're using the all right, so this, I have an application from twenty twenty-three, which is for August, which is obviously John.
The December of twenty twenty-two is the correct CSM application that he submitted. That was given to us on one nine of twenty-three, but it's signed by Kathleen Strong on twelve twenty-one. Do you agree with that, Doug?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's correct.
To move this along, I'll make a motion to approve the Elizabeth Anderson Revocable Trust CSM on Highway thirty-five and Riverview Acres with PID number zero three zero two zero six five ninety zero 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 with the notation that the wetlands will be shown on the CSM. And the CSM will include wording that will make the owners aware that if it's further subdivided, they will have to bring the private road up to standards.
Second.
Did I miss anything else?
No, but I just want to make it clear that all the landowners are happy with this, and there is one concern that we are setting a new precedent that they do not have to upgrade the road until another subdivision comes.
Right. Yeah.
This is private land. We share, you know, my road. The other association shares time. We've agreed with them. That road can be extended, but we're not under computer. But go with them and you have no time to that line.
But.
County, St. Craig, Ohio.
Well, I just want to clarify, the St. Craig County does not govern the town's roads, and that was put through the Supreme Court of the state. The town is in charge of its own roadways, and we determine what and how they will look. So that's up to us. Yeah.
We want the parent to stay in China still.
Right.
And that's thirty people.
I understand that. I get what you're saying.
We have a double road. We spent roughly a million on that road.
I understand what you're saying. You're going to have to come up to the microphone.
Hi, I'm Kathy Strong, trustee of the Elizabeth Anderson Revocable Trust. I don't really think you're setting a precedent. There's already driveway there. And you're not asking for another driveway. You're just asking for two people to come onto that driveway. I can see if we have the driveways, then you'd be asking for the private road. I think you've got one driveway with always had since nineteen eighty-nine. So all you're doing is we're just moving it over. You have two people sharing it hopefully and coming on to the Rahab. Or not Rahab, River View Acres Road.
Okay.
There's so many Rs in this, and Rahab and Ra, RBA Rs, but anyway, I don't think you're setting a precedent.
Right.
I think there's already an access. I can see that we didn't have the CSM already done in nineteen eighty-nine and Lot One. I get it.
Yeah.
But I think because we've got access right now, it's being used, farm access, so if we're just moving it over, you know, and we understand, if somebody wants to come and invite a bigger parcel, and if they want us, they want to come to the board and get it done, they can do it, but we're not going to sell it like that.
Okay.
So I think that should clear up any, if you're not making a precedent, it's your own problem.
Anything else in the board?
I do have a question because the land is owned by one party with two associations using the land owned by the other party. So in the future, if further subdivision occurs and upgrades are needed to that road, who pays for those upgrades? The person that owns it? Or the association that uses it, or the people that caused the event?
It's a developer, as it's always been in this town. It's the developer that does it.
Sorry. The road is owned by the Andersons. And they have, we have an easement laid over. They own the road. We have, we own, they have an easement. Therefore, there was an upgrade. The developer.
Yeah.
Developer looking for that.
Right.
It's just that teleported two thousand one, which is that information. Then I have one lot already. The other association doesn't want it. That's our, our association way in, we're, we're not in agreement, but they own that road. They have a farm field ride, the driveway. Farm field. Give them their lot. But then they, what association, who pays for the maintenance over the road? See, you don't have an agreement in place. This was brought up before. You're not addressing.
All right.
Can I address that?
Sure, go ahead.
We worked with the Anderson family. We, first of all, we built this road, and we're the only group along with St. Craig Landowners Association, and there's about thirty of them in total. And we built this fifty-seven years ago, and we've upgraded it from single lane, from dirt to single lane and so forth. Nobody else has ever spent a penny yet. Okay, and even today, we manage on a pro-rata basis, based on landowners. Each pays their fair share of. Each pays their fair share of any upgrade. Of any maintenance, snow plowing, the whole works. Uh, from that standpoint, so we're providing services that typically might come from the county. And then our agreements are with the Anderson family, since we don't want to work the land under the road. But we do have easement to associations that. It has no end date.
Right. Okay.
And from the standpoint of being able to raise money and do it, if you look at, you have ended during the road, it's a good quality road. Uh, is there's two circles on it. Um, everybody knows adequate access, and if that did get developed, we went, our discussion with the developer of how he's gonna make that access. Work for everybody.
Thank you.
Anything else on the board now? Yeah, so that being said. Here at least, there's already been one lot and had this discussion, but no, no home has been built on that, no further subdivision has occurred, so there's, has not been an event to trigger. Any upgrades to the road, correct?
There's not been an event that triggered it, no. And the position that you have to figure out if you're gonna take on this motion is, do you consider the access that they have to that lot? That's now it's gonna become a double access, still an access? Or do you feel that that triggers that whole thing? And the difficulty you have on this one is because. It's like any of the ones, any of the private roads that are along the waterways. You have a lot of people at the end of them, how far does that go? I so, in this, in this case, you have this lot two, if that was going to be developed, you'd probably have someone who'd have to upgrade it from thirty-five into this. acreage and put a cul-de-sac in there somewhere in order to lot it off, that's eventually what could happen there, could, I'm saying could. That's not gonna change the rest of the road that everyone else is taking care of.
No, I understand that, but the discussion is the piece to get to the other, the parcel.
Right. So, um, is everyone ready to do a vote on this so we can move on?
So do you have in the motion that it's very clear that this. Newly created shared driveway. Basically. Cannot be changed. Is if they change it, it's gonna.
Well, it's on the plat, we're on the CSM, they can't change it because it's shown on the CSM. I mean, there's no doubt about that, when it's shown, that's where it goes.
So I think the one thing that does have to be pointed out is still the verbiage of. Should this ever be sold, the larger parcel, which I think is.
No, I didn't say that, I said developed.
Developed, well, subdeveloped. If it was ever pushed, pushed to a subdevelopment.
Yeah.
Then we would have to, we would want the note added to the CSM, if, did I understand that correctly? So we would put that in the motion for proving that.
I did that, I already made the motion and said that.
Yep, so that any future person that works, if this were to be sold.
Anyone, if it's developed. Because we don't want to say that, you know.
They can sell it in one big piece.
Yeah.
Still. Yeah, if, if Kathy wants to sell lot two tomorrow, next week, she can sell it to anybody, they just can't subdivide without putting in the road infrastructure.
And when does the new owner learn that they can't subdivide?
It's on, that's what I asked for the language on the CSM.
It'll be on the CSM as of, as of record, so, I think it's, I think it's really important when you say. When it's developed that you say before it's subdivided.
Before it's subdivided.
Be, because ultimate, ultimately, just to clarify for everybody. Like, a lot of people are right here, there, there's not a public road there, it's a private road, subject to an easement. You control the access rates, so if there are more lots, you can require better access for additional lots. So your motion really speaks to subdivision, and before there can be subdivision, there needs to be an upgrade of, of that roadway.
So let's do this as part of the, just, just one second, as part of this motion. I would hope that you would pass the language past our attorney before you give me the, if it's passed before I get it to.
I, I wrote down further division.
But just so he's happy with that, and I'm gonna ask you to make a brief.
Okay, our real quick, because uh, one year ago, we had a meeting like this. At the Saint Craig County offices, and I spoke there and it's on record. We view ourselves, we have a legal document, uh, signed by everybody in our association, that we have. You know, a property interest in that road, because we built it, we used it, and the only person that used it was CLA. For those fifty-seven years, and that. As a property interest, we have custodial interest as to where the accesses. Uh, are, and if any who wants to go, and, and any other use of that role. Uh, from that standpoint, and we have a pretty good agreement with the Anderson family on that. All right, to some degree, addressed your discussion.
Okay. Alright. Are you done, or you want one more thing?
I would feel more comfortable if this language was already pre-written out and approved by our attorney and, and that. At that point is when you would, we would make the motion.
I'll work with Doug on it, I mean, and we're talking about the same thing, it's, it's land division, I mean, that's, that's where it is, and, and it's great that the association has.
Weighed in.
Uh, has weighed in and has its, its requirements, that being said. If there are going to be more lots out there, you're going to require different and better access. So that's what this note is going to say, that before there can be additional division.
Yeah.
The town has to approve the access plan.
Right.
Before that area.
But, but at that point, we're just approving the access plan, that doesn't mean that. We've stated on there clearly that it, that the upgrades are gonna happen.
Well, that's.
If they come through with something new, then.
They're not being promised anything on here, they're just being told they have to go through a process if they want to subdivide.
And, and, and remember, that note is going to be on the CSM. And then Doug's gonna come back presumably. Representing the developer at that point, because he'll still be around when that happens. And, and you're, and you're going to have to consider and have the right to approve. That land division at that time with those conditions relative to the upgrade of the road.
Yeah.
Right, so it's, it's going to come back before you, before that ever happens, and then you can put those conditions on the division.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. It took us a while, do you want to go like this?
We got to there.
Motion carried, you don't need to come another month. I'm sorry that you had to come to such a cold place to do that.
The trees.
Okay, so before we move on, I want to make the second motion, I want to make a motion to approve lot one's. Um, lot line adjustment. For the Anderson, I'm sorry, for the Elizabeth Anderson revocable trust. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that passes, so now you're set. Now you got them both. Thank you, thank you, thank you guys for coming. Onto the current Elizabeth Christiansen one on County Road I, Terry or Lena, one forty-third. That's you again, isn't it?
Yeah.
Aren't you? And you're not gonna be around for the next twenty years to come back and do all this, come on. Okay, you're up.
If I'm still vertical, I'll be happy about that part of it.
Okay.
Um, so again, this is um, Christianson property. Um, it's. On County Road I, and then again, two private roads across this property, one is. Hundred and forty-third Avenue, which is on the north side of this property, and then Terry or Lane. Which is on the south side of this property. This was divided about a year ago or so. Um, off of uh, approximately eighty acres, another whole forty to the east of this. So I, you saw that map back then. And this is a division of that whole parcel. What's before you now is. Lot one having access to one hundred and forty-third Avenue, and then lot two having access onto Terry or Lane. Again, these are two existing private roads that serve. I think Terry or Lane has five or six lots. Uh, down by the lake and hundred and forty-third. Has, I think, a few more than that, maybe seven or eight lots down on Bass Lake. Um, all the lots that you see along the north. That are shown as a CSM volume twenty-four. H five seven one seven and. Uh, Bass Lake Meadows, those lots do not access one hundred and forty-third, they go. They go north out to uh, West Shore Drive. So those lots are not involved at all. Um, when the, when we did this split a year ago. Um, to create the thirty-four and a half acre parcel. County at that time looked at accesses and said. Um, that we could not get a driveway. Um, directly to County Road I, so we had to use. Existing private roads for any access to this parcel.
And this parcel also had a field driveways.
Has field driveways, um, off Terry or Lane. A number, just a couple spots in there where they have driven up into. To do whatever they've done, it's all pine trees.
Yeah. And you've identified the new driveways on here? And will they be removing?
There's one on Terry or Lane, it's, they're hard to see, it's just. Kind of, you see the thirty-three point zero three dimension.
Yeah, I see that with the arrow there, yep.
And then on lot one, there's an arrow. That's just, if you see the fifty-foot dimension, just to.
Yeah, just inside.
The right of that.
So can we have you put the same note on these that you put on the other?
Sure.
And Nick, you'll make sure that that's done on these also?
Yep.
Anything else from anybody on this? Will they, any field drives, driveways will be removed and they put in the existing driveways that you've stated there? They're not gonna stay, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, that's easy enough to do.
Yeah.
I mean, there's not much improvement to them right now.
Right. But they don't get to, is what I'm trying to say.
Right.
Go ahead. Lori.
Oh, so we're gonna make sure that, again. That other properties.
Turn your mic on.
Oh, we're gonna make sure again that other properties. Beyond these two. Have an access to a road without going through the private driveway thing or a shared driveway.
That's.
No, this would be one, one center, one.
You gotta turn your, you gotta turn yours on. They each, they each have a driveway, one on Terry or, one on one forty.
Okay, that was what it is, yeah, yeah, so each one of them.
But if they're gonna subdivide and they're gonna put the same note on there that is on the Anderson property, that if they subdivide. They will have to bring in a town road.
And there is not gonna create an obstruction for, say, a contiguous forty owned by another party, correct?
What? I'm not sure what, what you're getting, I mean, this act won't stop anybody else from using the road.
Anything else from anyone? I'll make a motion.
I'll go ahead, I just have a curious question, when it, if it does get subdivided and they have to. Bring the road up to town standards, do they just have to bring it up to the? Edge of that property line?
Well, for instance, say the lot one was gonna happen, they would bring it up to standards as far in as they would come until they drop a cul-de-sac down into that lot one. So they're not improving the road to the end of it.
Right.
They're only improving the part that they're accessing.
That's.
Yeah, and then they'd have to make, they'd have to do some sort of cul-de-sac to get people in and out of there.
I think he's asking the same question I am.
Yeah. It all depends on these private roads where you're developing, are you at the beginning or are you at the end?
Yeah.
Because if you're at the end. Then you're, then you're stuck having to improve the whole thing, if you're at the beginning. You might get around that because you can bring in a new road and bring in to a cul-de-sac.
Well, it's easy before you have buildings on it.
Right.
It's after the buildings are on and you're trying to get beyond that point that it gets messy.
Don't worry, I know that very well. Been there, done that.
Well, and that's, and that's the reason that we want the note on the CSM to, to note that lots need to have access. Right, and they need to have appropriate access, and that's, that's really the crux of what we're interested in.
Yeah. Because I'm interested in when they're pulling building permits, that this is being taken into consideration.
Well, our billing inspector gets these motions on all of these CSMs from the clerk's office, so he's well aware of what is allowed. I'll make a motion to approve the CSM for Colonel Elizabeth Christiansen on County Road I, Terry or Lane and one forty-third. With one access onto one forty-third. And one access onto Terry or Lane. And that all other field driveways will be removed. And you will put notes on the CSM that any further subdividing. Will result in them having to bring the infrastructure up to town road standards. With a caveat that our attorney will make sure that the wording is correct. Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Thank you, and I forgot to ask you your two cents worth, did you have anything I forgot?
Nothing.
Okay, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Jim Rollo for the lot line adjusted on seven ninety-five, one fortieth, are you here, you're here, thank you, come on up. So you're looking for a lot line adjustment on your road because you have. You have something. You, you established something and you want to make, you're gonna have to change it, is that what you're saying to us?
Correct.
Go ahead and tell the board.
We have got four contiguous lots here. Um, on lot two. I installed a vineyard years ago and invested in with eight foot fence. And encroached on an outlot one. So all I'm gonna do is adjust the lot line on lot two, on lot two, to pick up the bigger.
Yeah.
And that's it.
And that's all, yes, it's in your drive, does anyone have, I'll share it quick. There you go. Just give me a quick second. I'm not as quick on here as I should be, I'll share, I have to hit that. Okay, so this is the original, which was a straight line across. And this is your new lot line adjustment that bumps it out. Approximately, I can't read that, how many feet? It's hundred, about a hundred and forty feet.
Hundred and forty-seven point seven five.
So that's a lot line adjustment, anyone have any questions for him on this? He owns all of this, so he's just asking for a lot line of adjustment to encompass. Where you planted your vineyard.
I have, I have, I do have a couple. Yes, what information review?
Oops, I thought I had it, has the plan commission reviewed this? Yes. Right? Lot line, oh, lot line adjustments, they don't review. Alright, I'm sorry, lot line adjustments, they don't review.
Alright. So we have that on record. Back, is, and Mr. Rullo, is any of this area that you're putting this lot line adjustment on, is any portion of that, that land, was it ever in a protected area? Back. That's. Is this any of this non-contiguous land? That maybe pertains to your, of one of your lots that you made that were, or homes that you had, that it was an acre and a half that was. That you put a home on. And you had two non-contiguous parcels in order to make up your three acres for that part that was supposed to be in perpetuity. Protected in not, not, no action, further action taken on, is this land included any part of that?
I believe, you know, just for the history for the record, this was uh, developed over a couple of year period, there's a guest home and then a main home, the guest home was built first.
Correct.
On a large parcel. When we built the main home, we had to subdivide, you couldn't have two homes on one lot. So at that time, we, we used Doug to uh, break off the guest home one with one point six seven, bigger lot. That's on this drawing. Then we had the main home, on what was about thirteen acres at the time. There is a green on that CSM tree set at the time, had it recorded, that there's a certain amount of green space left on that thirteen acre. We expanded that lot. It's now over fifteen acres. So I think to get to your point, we improved upon what was originally agreed to at that time.
So the, the one point six seven was the one I was referencing for that you needed.
Change here on that.
And so that acreage that was set aside to make, to bring that one point six seven up to a three acre density. That is still intact.
Yeah, in fact, we improved it, we made it bigger. That whole area that was tied to that lot two, and we just made lot two bigger.
Did you take that improved area and did that remain native species, or did you improve it with? Um, grapevines?
The, the area when I first did this was a cornfield.
There was some, there was two parcels in there that were.
Over the cornfield, chopper, barn, all of that. All of the fifty-four acres.
Alright.
So now there's, you know, eight thousand trees. You know, forty-six acres of prairie planted on, so none of the corn is there, so we improved upon the vegetation and they have that of the area.
Yes, so in your prairie area. You have quite a few acreage.
Yes.
Okay. It, that just need to be clarified to me, so that everyone is clear that you have maintained your three acre density on that original one point six seven acre lot.
Yeah.
Now, that was my own. Now, that was my only question.
Okay, anything from anyone else?
I have one small question, and this is for my education. Um, when we do a lot line adjustment like this, I know that we have certain boundaries we have to meet with. Um, depth versus width.
Yes.
Is this still in compliance of the depth versus width standards that we have laid out?
It would be because one is an outlot, and so it doesn't apply to those.
Perfect, thank you.
Yeah. Anything else from anyone? I'll make a motion to approve the lot line adjustment for Jim Rollo at seven ninety five, one fortieth Avenue to Richmond.
Second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Oh, yes. Let me sign quick. I'm gonna turn it over and have you start talking about.
But I just, as long as you're doing things signed, but I just wanted to tell you, I, I have a meeting tonight with Village of Roberts. Applying for T I D funds. They develop commercial real estate there. So you're looking for someone else in the area that might have a T I D. Village of Roberts has two active.
Oh, good.
I'm in trouble tonight. The meeting was supposed to be last week. Someone was sick on the board, so I got a team there. Now we're developing there. And so you might want to talk to those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You want to come around him, sure, we'll be right out.
Okay, go ahead. You start.
All right, and I'm chair members of the board. We did take bids on our Holden area roadway and drainage improvements project. Uh, earlier this week, um, otherwise known as the church street area project. Uh, we did receive uh, two bids. Um, one from stout construction and one from Ha Sun's. And the low bidder on the project was stout construction. Uh, we did split up, as you may recall, this project and I, I put a bid tab on your table there. Uh, if you go to the last page, the summary uh, shows what the bits came in at. Uh, you may recall that we had a base bid for the project. That includes church street, Egard street, state street north and the ravine project. Um, that was all together as, as the base bid. Then we had three alternates. Alternate one was state street south. Alternate two was Peterson street and alternate three was rainbow street. Um, the. Bid amount for. Uh, the total base bid, the low bid was six hundred and eighty nine thousand two hundred and twelve dollars and eight cents. Um, the alternate one for state street south is a hundred and fifty five sixty four oh eight. Peterson street alternate was sixty eight thousand seven hundred and eighteen and sixty two cents. And rainbow street was fifty two thousand two sixty nine. And ninety eight cents. So, we are looking at. Um, the possibilities here as far as how many of these alternates we can. Uh, recommend for award. Uh, there's some um, work that we need to do with the clerk's office to identify exactly uh, the budget that is available for this project. Um, the numbers that, that we have based on our calculations. Um, over the last few months and we, we've supplied you with some of those summaries as well in the last couple of meetings. Uh, approximately eight hundred and sixty thousand for construction. One caveat we have to that is we are looking at the total runoff management grant. Uh, the ravine part of the project did come in a lot lower. Uh, than we anticipated. So we are going to have to recalculate how much of the hundred and thirty four thousand. Uh, nine hundred and ninety two dollars will actually be able to use. Um, we can only apply. Uh. The, the grant. Uh, rules say that we can only use seventy percent of the project costs for the grant. And we have to calculate now since it's so much lower. You know, how much of that hundred and thirty four thousand actually will end up equaling seventy percent of that part of the project? So for example, it might be a hundred and twenty thousand or it might be a hundred and ten thousand. Um, we're still working on that calculation and making sure that we understand exactly what the state requires on that. Um, some other things that we need to look at, uh, the loan interest, which is part of the financing for the project, uh, I'm sure is more than. It was the last time we looked at it. Um, and we just want to make sure with the clerk that our numbers are. The same. And when we come back in March to actually ask the town board to award this project. Uh, we will have. You know, the numbers confirmed and verified. Um. Certainly, you know, we're hoping that we can award the base bid as well as at least alternate one. Which would be state street. South, which would allow for a contiguous project. You know, beyond just, just the church street, Egard. State street north and the ravine. Um, so. That's where we're at. Um, we're in the process of doing that analysis. Uh, we'll be getting with Terry early next week. Uh, to talk about that and um, make sure that we have a good handle on. What the finances are left for this project.
You, you want it?
I have one question. This is, I'm going through this. I'm looking at uh, line items. One and two on the first page of the Stan Tech. Bid tabulation. When I look at the stout construction. And I look at the us sons. Uh, incorporated. Did they give a breakout explanation as to how there can be that much of a difference in costs?
In the mobilization and traffic control?
Yep.
You know, those two areas are areas that contractors can. Where they put their money. Is where they decide to put their money. So there are clauses inside the contract that say how you're going to pay mobilization and traffic control.
Mm-hmm.
So you will find some contractors will put, maybe put more of their costs into mobilization. Because they might get a little bit more upfront, you know, based on the percentages as you pay that out. So it's not uncommon to see those two things. Different. Uh, it's just depends on how they choose to skin those cats.
Okay, well, the, the reason I ask is because between the two bids, there is a. Fairly six, you know, significant variance.
Right.
So I'm just trying to understand from my perspective, I come from the IT world, not roads, so. Education wise, but I, I need to understand this, so I'm just curious as to.
Right.
How we can have such variances between certain sections of each. Component of this complex product, project. That's why I was asking.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, Todd? Yeah. Well. Would. Do you have her phone number? Well, here, don't, don't say it out loud. Can you give her a call tomorrow and give it to her and then she'll give it to Lee so he can talk to her?
We can all speak.
Yeah.
Right.
That's fine. Right, it's pretty, it's pretty difficult.
Todd, do you have my contact information?
Yeah.
Give her my contact information.
That works.
Yeah, that'll be quickest.
Um, anyway, this is what is in front of us. We are not awarding the bid because Lee wants to have the opportunity to, first of all, talk to the state about our. Grant money that we have because the cost on this. Um, um. Ravine is a hundred and twenty six thousand roughly. And also to see what kind of monies we do have left over because he does not have all the interests in his calculations. So this will come back to us on March. We do have the ability to delay approval of a bid until then. And we have dealt with stout and we haven't dealt with Ha, so both of them are builders and contractors we've dealt with in this past. And you stated, I wish you would state for the board that you had at least. Seven requests for plans, I think you told me.
We had, we had, uh, I think it was at least seven. It might have been eight general contractors that were looking at the project. Um, now, these are the, these are the two that chose to bid it. Um, so I'm, I'm glad. The way the low bids came in.
Yep.
So.
Yes, Chris.
So for entertainment purposes. Were our funds at?
Well, he told you, he has about eight hundred.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm asking. Saint Joe here.
She hasn't done those calculations yet because this just came out this week.
Okay.
So by next meeting, you will have all the numbers.
Fine with that.
Right? Correct.
We need a motion to postpone a bit or rewarding the bid for.
We're just not taking action tonight on it, so I just wanted to review it for everyone. So you had any questions for Lee, you could ask them. And then we'll bring it back in March. Yes, sir.
But just for a quick review, let's say the numbers are all correct. And we have eight hundred and sixty thousand, eight hundred and sixty thousand.
Mm-hmm.
And the project came in pretty close to seven hundred thousand.
Right.
And the fixing a ravine. Cost a hundred and thirty four thousand minus.
No, that's in that, that's in that seven hundred.
That's in the seven.
Yes.
Oh.
So this number on the back, this six eighty nine includes all of that.
Oh.
So back here shows you alternate one, alternate two and alternate three.
That's right.
So. For reference to your question.
Yeah.
Assuming we have eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars.
Yep.
The base bid plus alternate one equals eight hundred and forty thousand dollars. Now that is a very tight. Gap.
Right.
As far as having any kind of contingency for anything that comes up that could be unknown. But, that gives you a sense of. You know, possibly in the neighborhood of where we're at.
That is including the grant also.
That does include the grant, but there's also the turnback dollars. Um, that, that's the board can determine whether or not to include those in this project. So that could potentially offset.
So we have a few, we have like, what is it, thirty leftover turnback?
Sixty.
Sixty. We have that left to turn back. And if you remember, we had this discussion a couple of years ago that if we did not use it all. On what we did, that we would use it in the Holton area on this project, so we can make that decision next month as to what we're gonna do with that. Cause that's sitting out there too.
Did our, where did I turn back money from?
Came from this DOT. You were on the board then.
Those funds were expended with our first major road project when we redid. Jane Street.
Yeah. But there was some leftover and we just said we, you know, hang on to them. So she'll have all that accounting done for us. With Lee, they'll make sure that their numbers match. And then when we come back next time, we'll see where we're at. You know, we can decide how far we want to go with this. And a part of it is in interest funds too.
Yeah, I think I'm the only one that was. On the board at that time.
Yeah. Yeah.
On the turnback money.
Okay. Can we move on then? Everybody set? Onto Public Works. Any updates on snow pulling? We haven't had much snow this month. So far. So far. Um. Everyone's paying a lot for snow pulling. I. Work in the town of Hudson. I can tell you this, the bill they got was. Choke-worthy, that's what it was. Ours looks like a piece of cake compared to that one. Um, anything else on snow pulling anyone has? Okay, on to acquisition of right away for Trail to twenty third. That's been something that we've been talking about. Has, have we done any further on this or do we have to do anything on this?
We have no, no further need to. Discuss this at this point.
At this point, okay? And the maintenance project for twenty twenty three, where are we on that one for crack seal seal coating? I know there was some discussion at Public Works, but nothing. Has gone forward at this time.
Correct. So we are looking at the uh, process that um, uh, village of North Hudson uses for. Crack sealing. Uh, we're also continuing to review. Uh, the roadmap to determine ultimately which roads we would seal coat. Um, and so that is an ongoing process and my understanding is that we will have that. That discussion and analysis finished by the March Public Works committee meeting and the recommendation. Uh, for the roads will be at the board in March and we will take bids in April like we did last year.
All right, anything, anyone else wants to add to that?
Uh.
Yes, sir.
So in our. Discussion at Public Works, I had a presenter come in and discuss. The operation and the equipment that he used. In North Hudson, the. Public Works Director of North Hudson came in and explained. How he was happy with the. Operation. He was happy with the results. He was definitely happy with the cost. Uh. To be transparent here. I would like. To move forward with being able to. Try that machine out. Uh, if I can. Show the board that it's worth doing that. I. Wanted to have the public works pick out a couple of roads that we could. Try out and do it on. I feel that that technology is present. It's. Uh. Something that's sought after everywhere. Quite a few municipalities own them themselves. I wanted to be able to show the public the difference between thirty years of expertise, the old way. And the new way. I just wanted to put that out there.
All right. And I understand that Public Works is gonna take a closer look at this next month.
What's that?
I said Public Works is gonna take a closer look at this next month.
Yeah.
Cause this was their first exposure at this meeting. Their last meeting.
Uh, I think that the presenter gave enough education.
But didn't they want to go look at it? Were they talking about a little field trip?
Yeah, there, there is some field trip talking involved.
Okay, all right. So that'll be back on your agenda to come forward. All right, anything else on that, Lee? Are we okay?
I think that's all.
So then you have a letter in your um. Um, drive. That the county wishes to change. Two road names. Um, I said twenty third, I meant twenty fourth. Um, so a portion of the twenty fourth street that is going east west. They would like to change that to one forty sixth avenue. Um, they feel that because it changes direction, it should have a change of name. Anything north, south is one thing, anything east, west is another. Also, they wish to change um, the. Address for, I gotta get on the next page. Arbor Hills. Has addresses there. Um, so they want to change it from. Arbor Hills Drive to Arbor Hills Court. This involves the town of Saint Joseph installing new road signs. And um, in the case of the Arbor Hills one, they're gonna have the same fire numbers. But I believe the um. The ones on changing from twenty fourth to one forty six will have. New fire numbers, so we will have to put those in also, as I understand it, because we can't let them move the old ones. Um, I talked to St. Craig County today. This is something that they're looking at across the town. And one of the things they're talking about doing is that if you have a road that goes into a parcel with a cul-de-sac. And it changes direction, they want it on the um, new. Flat, whatever that may be, that those people may have a change of addresses. So when they're buying those lots. What was this is now gonna be that. So they're trying to get all north, south to be one way, all east, west to be a different.
You mean like the city of St. Paul?
Kind of. I guess.
Or how like Cumberland does it where everything's either an avenue or a street depending on what direction we're going.
That's what the county would like to do.
But we don't live on a grid.
I know, but that's what they want. So they're asking us to change twenty fourth to one forty sixth avenue and to change Arbor Hills. Um. Arbor Hills cul-de-sac to Arbor Hills Court.
Yeah, Arbor Hills Drive.
The drive, well, the drive will still exist. So the drive goes in.
Yeah, but.
But the court goes to the north.
Yeah, so the, whatever would, whatever structure would potentially be there at. Parcel number zero three zero two zero nine zero thirty zero zero zero. Which alleged, you know, which apparently is open right now would move from two eight eight Arbor Hills Drive to two eight eight.
Arbor Court.
Port, C two.
Right. So. I informed the powers to be that we're not happy about this. That I see no reason why twenty fourth can't stay twenty fourth. It's not gonna go anywhere.
So.
So they refused to give in to me. They said we need to approve.
Uh, I've, this is absolutely disgusting. That. I've went out and assessed, okay, people on Arbor Hills are accepting. The court part. Okay, great. We're moving over to. Twenty fourth street. Uh, I was educated that. The people are looking at their driver's license. Their passports. Their shipping abilities and receiving abilities. The. Investment of. Fire numbers. On. The brick and mortar of their home. Uh. I, I really am questioning. How. Whatever governmental agency is. Trying to do here, that they get. To shove that down. Trying to do here, that they get to shove that down the throats. Of these people. And it's cost to the people. They've not brought up any ability for errors and omissions as the governmental agency that let this go through the first time.
Right. I, I don't disagree. They, in their letters to these residents, they've told them that. They manage property addressing in unincorporated towns in St. Craig County under guidance of chapter thirteen. Of the St. Craig County Code of Ordinances. And in that. They um, assign addresses based on um, coordination with. Local town officials, county emergency services, and U S Postal Service. They state that on the twenty fourth street issue that due to the discovery that east west portion is separate and distinct from the normal north and south. And I said, you all agreed to have that be twenty fourth to the end. The only thing that has changed is we're adding a cul-de-sac. A cul-de-sac a little bit further in.
The, the thing that makes me laugh is twenty fourth goes to the west a lot further than it does to the east.
Well, it doesn't go anywhere to the east. It goes north and south and then it turns, no.
Well.
It goes north and south and turns east.
There's a, there's a long. Stretch of twenty fourth that goes west to the Bomester line. And I, and I'm just kind of chuckling with. Is that going to be one forty six two since we're out there?
I don't know.
Well, I think it should be left alone.
I guess.
Is.
Go ahead, Larry.
Is any of this tripped by the new subdivision?
Sure did. They took a look at it when they saw that subdivision come in.
And so is this? Only for the new subdivision or did it kick into the old one?
Everybody.
Yeah, which I feel is BS.
So. I'm trying to come up with. How many street signs do we replace? And are we going to be giving them all new? Are we paying for all new fire numbers for them as a result in that?
Yeah, there's five people that live there.
I look at as, as professionals for the people here. That, okay, we had a bunch of errors. We're going to correct from this date forward. What we're doing. And not go backwards. On the airs. That they, what happened?
I mean.
I'm, I'm disgusted by it. So whatever.
Well, I'm going to bring this up because you're, you're exactly right. I forgot that it. Yeah, there, I.
I was gonna say, I understand it for the brand new one, but going back and making, going back to the other one.
Well, the thing is Arbor Court and Arbor Hills, no one complained about that and they changed it.
Well, I can, I can share that. Residents have always brought up, we've had discussions in public works. About they would like court. Okay, fine. So maybe that got to the. Uh, St. Croix level. And then twenty fourth street is a completely different. Cat. We just as a town board made a cul-de-sac down there. It ain't going anywhere.
So I.
There's a cul-de-sac on the other.
I put it up there so you can see it.
Yeah.
So they're talking this leg here that's going across into Bob O'Brien's property. So right now there's a cul-de-sac there. And now we're going to put a cul-de-sac in further. Because he's, he's sectioning these four lots off. Those, that cul-de-sac will never go any further because there's a ravine through here. That you need a bridge to get across.
Sorry.
So this cul-de-sac that we're moving, I don't know, three hundred, four hundred feet in there. Is what triggered their attitude that this needs to be a different road. Different name. And they're going to allow twenty fourth to continue to the end of it, even though like you say. You're right, the, the east side, east side portion. Chris is longer than the west side portion. I realized that till I put it up there.
So they didn't even take the whole thing. They only picked out.
Talking about what turns to the east. So that affects. One, two, three, four, four people. Because the Bob O'Brien property owners aren't going to care because they don't live there yet. Whatever their address is, is their address.
I don't, I don't see why. Uh, it's going to be above my pay grade, but I'm, I'm highly. Saying that our attorney or, or the, or their uh. Administration review this, have some kindness in this situation and move on.
Where's everyone else stand? Change it. I, I will tell you this, having had to change my address because they changed my address. I did not move was a pain. For three years I kept saying, my house didn't move, my mailbox did. My house didn't, my mailbox did. It's a pain. The only saving grace for Arbor Court is that it's the same. House numbers. That's their only saving grace so that they can find them.
Yeah.
Are they going to? Are they going to do this for other community or other developments that have been around?
They're looking at it across the county. So, so in my case, if they do that, it is going to be address change number five. For my house. Well, that road is going to the east right now has a cul-de-sac. And he's, but that's in the Bob O'Briens. It used to have one further out. Now it's in.
Uh.
There was a turnaround.
Just for a cl- just for clarification, twenty fourth street at that piece. Never had a cul-de-sac.
But yeah, it's just, it just now is in, into a cul-de-sac. Yeah.
And, and this is me. We sat out on our own as Saint Joe. And I feel that we have a bigger say in it than across the whole county.
I just can't imagine what it's going to involve to re-sign and.
Well, you're going to have to buy, buy a sign for that corner is where you're going to have to buy. And then you have to buy one, two, three, four fire number signs.
No, I'm just.
Okay, so I, I have a question. First. The statement was made that they're looking at auditing. This is essentially what they're doing is they're going through the township. And looking at what we have today and saying. You have to change these, or we're requesting you to change these uh, street addresses. And for these subsets, they also need a new fire number. I don't necessarily understand the fire number section. Yes.
Well, they have to have a fire number that matches their address. And the people on twenty fourth that they changed to one forty six, their numbers are changing.
Oh, because we already.
The number, the numbering going this way is not going to be the same as it was this way.
So for a small. Education. The measurement from the river. This way is one set of fire numbers. The measurement from Pierce County line. To the north is a different set of numbers and that's how they get the fire number.
Yep, okay. No, no, but I think the, the question I have is first, what, what steps to the, you know, what is available for the board to make a decision on this? Is this we, we get told by the county, you have to do this and. Too bad. And secondly, how many times more are we going to revisit the same discussion? Because it, to me, it doesn't make any logical sense to have it come in two in February, three in March. One in April. I mean, this is, this would be just a total waste of time.
Two, two things that I, I wanna. Bring up. Do we have the opportunity to talk to corp counsel about this situation?
I think there's, yeah, I think there's an opportunity to have the conversation, whether, whether or not they'll agree with us.
Well, I, I want to put my foot down on this is. This is BS.
Yeah.
And the, the other, the other thing that. I want to point out here is I ain't heard of any other streets in Saint Joe being. Picked on or.
Not at, not at this time, but I'm just.
The, oh, hold on. The reason why this was kind of a smashed sore thumb is. We put it, we'll, which is fine. We allowed that cul-de-sac to come in there and they looked at it.
But what's Arbor Ridge? What's Arbor Hills? There was no development there.
Well, like I, I said, I don't have the answer on how that word got there.
And they approved that connection to the Hartman Home Development. On thirty seventh, they approved that connection. And this is a cul-de-sac that serves five people. That's what's sitting up there. And now they picked on them. Which that's been going on for the last eight months because I've heard from those residents repeatedly.
Okay, repeatedly negatively?
Yes.
Oh, well, that's interesting. I guess I'm talking to the wrong people there now.
Well, no, because you talked to the twenty fourths. I have.
Arbor Hills, the, the couple that I talked to was. Delighted that it was going to be court. So I guess I haven't talked.
I think, I think I talked to most of them that I explained to them, this might be easier for them so that they're separate from the rest of it. And I don't think they have as big a problem with it as the people on twenty fourth do.
Well, I think we should. I'm, I'm going to make a motion that we have discussion with corp counsel on the situation for twenty fourth street.
Second.
And now we're going to move on.
Well, you have to address Arbor. Court too.
I make a motion that. Arbor Court. Is also discussed at corp counsel.
So that's an amendment.
Amendment.
Amendment, amend my second.
Okay. So you want both of them to go with our attorney and corp counsel and see and bring them back in March? Is that okay?
Yeah.
All those in favor say aye. You gotta be quick here.
I understand um. Going to court, but we should at least let them know what we would be having.
They, they should be professional with leaving it alone. Move forward. Retroactive old stuff. We've already lived through all this stuff. People built their life around their address.
Yeah.
I didn't swear none of that.
Just, just so I'm clear though, the, the one forty six or the twenty fourth. Street currently those two homes are, that are on that extension have a one forty sixth Avenue address.
No, they have twenty fourth.
They have twenty, okay. They show on the G, the G I S already.
Changed that all by themselves.
By themselves with no approval from us.
Okay.
When I talked to Brett Boudor today, he said, well, I'm hoping that you're going to approve this so we can move forward with this. And I'm like.
Whoa, whoa, whoa. So they already changed it in G I S. Doesn't that mean that everything that like GPS, all that?
Yeah, so this is a great discussion. That's how I got notified is the guy's ordering stuff for his kids and. FedEx truck is doing hot labs around there. Parked out by my road and I'm like, can I help you? And then while we're looking for one, one forty sixth street here. And I went, but they ain't here, buddy.
So, okay.
So it's already written down somewhere.
A decision was already made without anyone in the township giving any level of input.
Oh, no. Oh, no. I was, I had the, the guy that is in our drive that sent us the letter. I just got to come back to that wherever he is. I had discussions with him and I said, I'm not happy about this. Doug A. Wallace. I said, we are not happy with changing this. There is no reason to change twenty fourth. It's dead ending at that cul-de-sac. That cul-de-sac will go anywhere else.
Yeah, but you're not even talking about changing it. It's changed. They just wanted you to say. Okay.
This is over a month ago when he said this and he said, well, we'll be sending you the paperwork. So that you can approve this and that's what this meeting is about.
Thank you. No.
I mean, I haven't kept anything from the board. It's a simple fact that he told us and then all of a sudden it's being done. I'm just like, what is that?
At any point did I think anything was.
Yeah.
Covered up. It's that you're retrieving stuff faster than these meetings are.
Well, I guess Nick, you've got your order.
Yeah, I'll make the call.
So the motion was made and seconded. Can we take the vote now?
And this Doug that's signing from St. Craig County is who we speak to.
Yeah, he's a G I S guy. He's a G I S analyst. I'll make sure that she sends, will you make sure to send that to him? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes, it's on to them and we'll have it back on March. Okay, Parks, Trails and Rec. Where are we on this slide, et cetera?
Uh, the bid out, we are, uh, the ad for bids came out, uh, I believe today. And we are taking bids on March third.
All right, so it'll be at our next board meeting.
Yep.
All right. Anyone have any questions on that? And then Fall Festival, where are we on that? Anything we need to know about at this time?
Yeah, because I, I think this was brought up before. Um, I really wanted to be at the town. The town and all the town committees involved, not just the parks. We just have a few people. Um, so do you want me to set up a meeting or maybe Terry can help me with? Um, the other committees so that we can all discuss it together.
Sure. That works.
And I don't know, should we do like, it just be what, one person from each committee?
One person from each committee. Yep, that'll work. Talk to Terry about it and since.
Committee, what, what do you think we want to accomplish at the Fall Festival?
Well, just kind of like what I used to be before, just letting people know that we're here. Um, that the park is here, the playground, um, what services we have here. Just, just letting everybody know that, what we're doing.
And will you make sure and invite the fire department along with the committees? Okay. And then Lori, will you? Be there on behalf of the board to that meeting?
I, I can attend the all committee meeting. Yes, okay, absolutely.
All right. Anything else, anyone? Perfect. All right.
Okay.
Plan Commission. We'll get through this and then we'll let Lee go. First of all, is there anything on nuisances and enforcement issues that we need to know about? Anyone seen anything that we should be aware? It's snow outside, so you don't see much. Wait till the snow melts, right? I put on here the planning for commercial industrial areas of the town only because we had our Tiff district thing that we had talked about tonight. I didn't know if there was anything on there that you wanted to talk about. Did you have anything?
Just, you know, we talked last month about uh, our proposal and. You know, we're just waiting to see if the board has any further thoughts. I don't have any further thoughts at the moment.
Okay. Anything from anyone else on that? Otherwise I'll put it on for next month. And then chapter one oh one fees update. So the Parks and Trails Committee, Parks, Trails and Recreation Committee had sent. Their priorities to us on one twenty three. Is the board ready to send that on to the Plan Commission? Because you have not gotten it. Yeah, you have not seen it yet. So are you ready to send that to them? And as part of the needs assessment, are you ready to work on that part of it? You have your map in front of you. So why don't you speak to that?
Well, what we would just be looking for, and I'm not sure what the timing would be uh, in relation to the Plan Commission's review, but we would just. Uh, ask that the board confirm that yes, these are the priorities and. Then give us the go ahead to update the cost estimates. So I'm not sure if that is, if we're at that point right now.
I get it. So this map shows the two priorities that the um. Um, Parks, Trails and Rec identified. Number one was the one from um. Scout camp up around to twenty third and the other one is across River Road. Those are the two you identified that you stopped where. From the scout camp Chrysler up to twenty third. Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. That gets you up to that overpass. And then the other thing is um. Um, River Road. Is the board prepared to go forward at this time with this? Or do you want some time to think about it?
I have a question about the River Road.
Sure.
When, when we say um. We'd like to put a bike path slash pedestrian implementation on River Road. That road is fairly lethal to walk down right now. I know I live off of it and I wouldn't walk down that road unless I absolutely had no choice. So I'd want to understand like. What are we? Considering with that, like, is that, would that be what we are authorizing to do is to start the design of that and what that would look like?
No.
Or what would we be?
You're saying that you're agreeing to that's where it would go and therefore you would collect impact fees to funding part of it. And right now we own right away along. County Road V. And River Road to thirtieth.
Hmm.
Beyond that, it would have to go on road.
Hmm.
County wants to take it from North Hudson up around and all the way to um. Trump Brook. And we've informed county that they're not going to use Trump Brook to the bike, bike trail. They better be coming onto their land. At the state park there, if they're going to use that as a trail. That we're not going to open up Trump Brook Road for trail on there. Cause you talk about River Road being.
Oh, yeah. I mean, a river road has some semblance of a shoulder.
Yeah.
But um, then how? How does that play in with that parking lot they want to put on the state park?
They want to put that there, but we, we made a motion and sent that to them over a year ago that we would not allow them to use Trump Brook Road as a bike trail. And if they want to, they want to get that parking lot, they need to come off River Road onto their land and drop down that way.
Did they ever respond?
Nope.
Can they?
And that's kinda in your purview.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm trying to figure out.
You can have that discussion again because the board was pretty much in agreement that we thought they should go further down River Road and use that first parking lot and enter that way.
For the parking lot?
Yeah.
I.
And for access.
Yeah, I don't think they should put a bike trail anywhere near on the road on River Road, this is at two in the morning, they're, yeah, you should go out there drag racing. I wouldn't wanna, I mean, come on, that, that road barely saws in the winter, even when we chemically treat it, why would you wanna put a bike trail? I don't know, as a person who lives up that road, I just, I see that just being one big hazard.
Oh, I know.
That's my two cents, thank you.
And I'm, I'm just looking at this from the standpoint of, it says, by the implementee, implementing agency. So we're blue. And is that we're laying out the trails for us that we would, that where the impact fees could go correctly?
Yes.
Correct? And we're underlaying under this green River Road one as a dotted line. Partly solid, what's the difference between the solid line and the dotted line? Is that like shared between WISDA, the D N R and the town, is that what I'm seeing from?
So.
What does that mean?
Talking the River Road.
Yeah, you're talking the River Road.
Solid here, but it's dotted there, what does that mean?
Well, fir- first of all, the Parks Committee prioritized one A, okay, so that's, that's the main piece that we're talking about.
One, so one A is the only piece for the impact fees.
Correct. I believe that, that's what.
Well, four also, but one A.
But one A is the second priority in this sheet.
Okay, exactly.
Yeah, so first priority is four A, the second, the second priority is one A, so we're talking about one A, so that's what we're talking about for impact fees. Um, I think the rest of that, um, section, um, which is talked about in. Um, the Park Trails and Recs Committee's document here, that one looks like it is a, a shared cost between several entities, it looks like, the way it's laid out, it looks like the town and the D N R. Is, is how that's laid out.
And I think that's a novel goal. But I think that that is just gonna be one nightmare for anyone to be responsible for.
In, in all honesty, from Trump Brook Road all the way to A. Would be an intergovernmental operation, it'd have to be between the D N R, the county and the town. But at this point, for the purpose of this map, from the impact fee standpoint, we are only talking about fees for one A and four A.
That is what this document recommends, yes.
Okay.
One point of clarification I wanna ask is one B, while excluded from impact fees, that's not to represent Trump Brook Road, correct? The, the map's a little rough cut in, it is or is not?
And we've told the D N R that we do not want that bike trail, we were very clear on Trump Brook Road.
That was put on the map because that was what was in their plan.
Yep.
Okay.
So you can, if you have a chance to investigate that a little bit in your emails, maybe you can bring that back next month.
I haven't gotten a single email about this yet.
No, no, this is old ones.
Oh, okay.
Old ones, you won't have new ones, so because I'm multitasking here, okay? So Stan, just hold on, it'll be fine, so we're working off this old twenty fourteen date off this old, um, facility, bike study. Is this map or some version of it's gonna end up in the outdoor recreation plan?
I would have to look and see what the plan for that is.
Because the outdoor recreation plan does not really have, we need a map in there.
Sure.
Yeah, there, there is one, and, and then it's.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, just, just done, this map's ten years old, nine years old. This is November fourth, twenty fourteen.
No, that, that's cuz it's off of an old document, that'll eventually update.
Yeah, this, this, it needs to be updated at some point.
Yeah, so this is, this, we're going in that direction.
Yes, but I brought this to give you an idea of what was proposed.
This is just our impact, yeah.
Right.
So is the board ready to vote on this, or do you wanna mull it over for another month before you send it off to Plan Commission to take a look at?
I have nothing to mull, not, my opinion's not gonna change in a month.
Okay, so if the board is okay, we'll send it off to the Plan Commission and then we'll have you do some cost estimates for them to look at.
After the Plan Commission or cost estimates for the Plan Commission?
Can you give them general cost estimates before or not?
I will talk with.
We'll see how that works, if it has to wait for a month, then it can wait for a month with them, you can let them know, okay, everyone okay with that?
So. Real quick here, we're going down River Road, are we improving the width or are we putting a stripe on the road with a bicycle sign on?
So my understanding, based on the land that the town owns, is the portion that we're talking about tonight could be off-road.
Okay.
Not all of it, only to thirtieth.
Okay, okay.
So from the corner to thirtieth, then it's gonna have to go back on road because we could not get clear title to the next section to Broken Arrow, is it? And then from there, you can't get off-road at all.
We, we tried to get to Broken Arrow, but that didn't.
They couldn't get clear title.
Well, yeah, but I, I was just clarifying cost of.
I know.
Construction.
Yeah.
But the impact.
So I heard zero.
So the impact fee part of it, we're not putting out that, we're gonna try and put that, pay for that trail on River Road as a part of using impact fees, right?
The first part we may.
Right now, the premise is, is that we will be calculating the cost for one A period to put into the impact fee calculation.
Okay.
Plus four.
That plus four.
Four, so. River Road is not in play as a part of this.
I don't.
One A is.
One A.
One A is, but not, not from past Trump, not, not east of Trump Brook, it is not.
Correct.
Okay, all right, on to one sixty eight changes and flow chart, they, the. Plan Commission had a discussion about these changes that are one sixty eight, which are in your drive, they did not make a decision on them. They did ask about being able to get a flow chart. As to how this would work, and part of the reason is, we all spoke about this in our meeting, is that we felt that this needed to be clarified. So is the board okay with directing Stan Tech to put together a flow chart that would match this? And did you have anything you wanted to add regarding that language?
You know, I think, um, to be honest, I think a, a further, more detailed discussion would actually be helped by a flow chart.
Okay.
Um, I think that would help the discussion, so that would be my, I mean, I can talk, you know. For a long time about lots of things, but I think the flow chart would be helpful.
So if the board is okay with this, we're gonna direct Stan Tech to put together a flow chart for the subdivision ordinance that will go to the Plan Commission meeting to help them make this decision.
Do we wanna discuss the money piece of this flow chart?
I. Cuz if we're gonna direct him to make a flow chart, I'm sure there's a fee associated with this. Well, there is, and that's kind of the cost of doing business when it comes to ordinance review, so I kinda feel it's part of that. You wanna top end dollar on it, is that what you're asking for? I'm asking that he doesn't get a blank check.
Right.
Well, I, I would start to question Lee if he came back with a thirty five thousand dollar flow chart, it would have to be one heavens of a good flow chart.
I can guarantee you it won't be that much.
And it should hold his, it should, it should hold Anton's hand if it's gonna be that much money, right? Uh, he's got ordinances, so I, if the board is okay, we'll just direct him to go forward and I know we believe we'll be conservative. You okay with that? All right, thank you. Um, I don't think I have to do anything else with you, Lee, does anyone have anything else for Lee before he leaves? Good. Okay.
Thank you, witness.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, um, just give me just a second here, everybody, I'm gonna have our clerk talk to this, um, streaming service called Stream, Streamable. Um, it is a service that she has found that will allow us to download our videos onto our website, which I'm gonna show you here in just a moment, go ahead.
Okay, so I talked about this at the Technology Committee. And this service has quite a bit of space, it's like two terabytes of space, and we can upload our recordings to this, um, company. And create a link onto our website so that people can view the recordings from the website. And the cost for this, um, service is basically, what was it, a hundred dollars?
Hundred dollars a year.
Hundred dollars a year. So.
What?
That is one way to get the recordings on the website, which has been requested a lot.
Okay, so I'm trying to get to it, I'm just having a problem.
Somebody. Uh, help. Educate me a little bit, so today we have it presented out to the public through Zoom, correct?
No.
No.
You.
They can come in on Zoom right now, yes.
Right now, the, the public, if they want to see the recording or want the recording, they have to request it and it's put on a flash drive.
Okay, so you're teaching me this, Zoom or whatever technology we have here where people can currently see, see us live. That. Technology doesn't have recording capabilities, period.
So, here's, here, let me just, let me see, so we use Zoom to record the meetings for every commission and the town board.
Yeah.
And then there are public records requests to get copies of this.
Okay.
So instead of the public records request receiving each individual one, this proposal would just post the videos to our website as a link.
Okay.
And then people wouldn't have to make those record requests, it would just be available up to a certain, you know, limit because there's a cost associated with space. Okay.
So the difference being is that by using Streamable, you're able to allow your videos to be viewed on your website. They are not able to be manipulated or have ads added to them. Because they're not open to the public being able to download them and then upload them back up, so to speak.
So they couldn't change the words on my.
That's right in your mouth, exactly.
Okay. No deep fix for you, my friend, okay?
Oh, I had it up this morning or this afternoon and it worked so good and you think I can get there? No, no limit whatsoever and it's totally free.
If you wanna watch the same town board meeting every night for your enjoyment, probably in rage.
Yes, sir.
All committee meetings and board meetings and put a link on our website.
I'm not gonna promise you that they're all recorded because there are glitches that happen. The last Parks, Trails and Rec Committee did not get recorded, so things happen, so I will not make that promise to you that they will all be recorded. Yeah, continue.
How many years of reported meetings available for the town?
You mean, how long will they be available?
How many years, yeah, are, are you gonna keep meters in the vault before they start falling off, three years, five years?
No, I think the, the plan is to do about six months and then delete them all, yeah. Yeah, yeah, just they'll, they'll come up, delete them off to put new, the new recordings on, cuz it'll take up space, it'll take up a lot of space.
That's what they're telling you is that reporting will be on the website for six months before they're.
So, I'll let you answer to first, I wanna.
It, it's up to the board how long they wanna keep the videos on there.
Well, uh, it sounds like we should refer to our attorney on how long, how long do you keep something like that?
Yeah, but I mean, you don't have to keep it in any particular form.
Okay.
What, I think what's trying to be accomplished right now, you can make a record request for meetings. And so then it goes to Terry and then Terry downloads the meeting, uh, to a hard drive and then gives it to them. The, this part of it, the goal is really to be able to direct them, meetings on the website. Right, this, the town's still gonna keep old copies, I presume, of meetings so that we have them on file. And we, obviously we have minutes as well and then, so that's, it's kind of a couple of set issues, access to one issue. Will we, then we'll continue storage requirements, we have the, the archive meetings and certainly the best.
That is correct, so this is a picture of the actual finance committee meeting and you can see people moving around it, I, I closed the sound on it. That's right off the website, I clicked on the little media thing and up it pops and you start it. The nice thing about this is that it is secure, it doesn't allow people to download, it doesn't add, add advertising to it as it is done on YouTube. And it doesn't allow people to manipulate the video, you can go onto our website and look at these meetings and have a chance to view whatever it is you want to view.
At a hundred dollars a year.
At a hundred dollars a year.
I think it's great, I just.
Well, we're only required, as I understand it, to keep videos a limited time because they're not considered the official record. And.
Your minutes.
Yeah, minutes are our official record of, of terms, so we have limitations as to how long we can keep things. Um, many municipalities are deleting them after every six months, they're deleting them because they have the storage capability that you have to have for these videos that are lasting two, three, four hours is incredible.
Sure.
I mean, we've got a big hard drive sitting in there that that's all it holds is videos. Zoom is dropping them, as soon as we fill up, they're dropping them, so she has to transfer them over to get ahold of them. But there comes a point where you're gonna start deleting them because there's no reason to keep them, enough time has gone on and the minutes are the official record, not the video. The video is just a convenience. And there will be a limitation on our website, eventually we will get to the point with Streamable that we'll fill it up. And we're gonna have to start deleting them off of Streamable and that means they'll drop off the website, but are you gonna go back five years to look at a, a Public Works meeting, probably not. Yeah.
You know, it depends cuz town board meetings are big, really big, and like the finance committee meeting could be really small, so kinda depends on what meeting.
Yeah, so anyway, you can see people moving around in there, I mean, it's, it's, it's slick as can be, it works awesome.
Do you want a motion?
See? Yeah. Um, if you would like to make a motion and she could enter in, then all the meetings from the first of the year, we'd start there.
I make a motion that we move forward with the Streamable. Program for streaming of our meetings, videos and. Our website for viewers and to. Have them documented from January first forward and as. The age out at six months.
Second.
Is there a second? I'm comfortable with that, I think that's a good idea and we'll see where we end up, we can always revisit it. All those in favor say aye, 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 opposed, it passes, so she'll be doing that in the next couple of weeks. And then, um, this came out of technology, they were asking to set up a meeting with broadband providers to provide, provide access to residents in the town. And then um this came out of technology. They were asking to set up a meeting with broadband providers to br- provide access to residents in the town. Um technology had quite a few residents come to them asking for access and there seems to be a difference of understanding as to what's available and what one person's been told this, another person's been told that. And so it was suggested that maybe we bring these broadband providers to one meeting. Did I say it right? Cause you were there.
Yeah, I think the the it really came down to there are a group of residents here who who kinda feel that um I don't know, that they've they've been kinda left out or they've been siloed out of of broadband more towards the future, less towards, you know, what was good in nineteen ninety-six. So um basically, the discussion came back as they they wanted to get more information and education as to what it would take to get broadband in these areas. And, you know, we laid out a, I walked them through quite extensively what costs and things are and and the opportunities and things that we wouldn't, wouldn't be eligible to do. So um kinda the decision from the committee was to ask the board if, you know, they could use, the Technology Committee could use a meeting to uh try and communicate with some of the providers uh that service our area. So um the one that they did have some concerns of was trying to get a hold of somebody at AT&T. I jokingly recommended Teresa, cause she seems like she's talked to everyone there. Um but to try and get, you know, like Baldwin Telecom, Lightstream, I apologize, Northwest Communications, and then if there are any other listed providers.
Midco.
Midco was the other one I'm um to come to the next Technology Committee and and have residents who are affected by not having access to broadband kinda be able to talk to them and understand, you know, what's what's required.
I I wanted to correct that. I thought they were asking for a separate meeting.
Did they ask for, did they ask for
Separate, separate meeting.
Okay.
A meeting for this purpose only.
Okay, I apologize.
So you said the next technology and I don't believe that that's what they wanted to do.
Maybe I missed it.
Yeah, I mean, we feel like it could come and listen and these providers could talk to us about what their future looks like with us, so. But they they better live in St. Joe.
Well, and and I think the other thing I wanted to say, and thank you, Terry, for getting it done, was getting the FCC map published to the website. So that people can plug in their address right on that site and go look up. Here's what here's what the Federal Communications Commission has listed as eligible in my area.
Yeah.
You know, cause sometimes it's an education issue.
So I'm heavy go back on memory lane for a minute here. I thought as a group, we agreed upon that Northwest Communication could come in here and get all this done.
They could, but they wanted all this money and we did not allocate that money to them at that time.
Yeah, they came in and asked for two hundred and was it two hundred and forty, no, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand of ARPA funding to finish out. And we didn't do it and they, I don't know, Teresa, I I thought you said this, I missed, I may have misunderstood. But based on that decision, it it sounded like it was said that Northwest actually gave up the county ARPA grant that they received.
Oh wow.
Township did not step in and endorse finishing.
Oh.
That's what I thought you would say.
I didn't say that. I said they gave up the part that was in the town of Hudson.
Oh, they gave it
To New Richmond, which only barely touches our town, that did not have anything to do with that money.
And I thought the ARPA committee money from the county included all sixteen miles that was in the township. That's how it read on the website, on St. Craig County's website. It reads that after receiving this money, Northwest Communications will be responsible for the remaining sixteen point whatever miles in town of St. Joseph.
I don't know. Like I said, things keep getting changed.
And they're fluid.
And I Exactly.
I I think the hard part is, right, is that, and I've laid this out, it's it's a two million dollar ish project. They don't wanna be on the hook for two million bucks if they can't get people to sign up and they want someone to help them subsidize some of it.
And 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 one last thing for me, isn't broadband kinda leaving the technology scene?
No. Broadband's a technical term to define the connection to the internet. So broadband is, broadband is considered a technical term to define a level of connection standard to the internet.
Alright.
But I think what you're saying is that isn't cable. Fiber.
Fiber's technically the new standard that they want everyone to be put on is fiber optic to the home. That is what they want.
Yeah. Cause you can get broadband a lot of ways.
Sure, you can get satellite and
So if the board is okay, we'll have technology go through and set up a separate meeting for this with providers. It probably isn't gonna take place for, you know, forty-five to sixty days, but at least they can get on the radar.
Yeah, you need a approval or a motion?
Yeah, you can do a motion if you wish. What?
I just, one thing that I would like before, maybe we get into, maybe Address Department is different than Technology Department, but I would like clarification on the status of the money that has been discussed that at one time had our name at St. Craig County level. I wanna know, that should be a very simple communication that could happen easily to get a statement on, is that money there or not? And if, if if they say there's some money still left there, fine, how much is
Do you wanna take care of that?
How much could it be?
I could try reaching back out to the county's ARPA committee.
Okay. Well, and the county also set up broadband committee and their next meeting, I believe, is in March.
Yeah, the problem is they keep putting it like eight thirty in the morning on a Wednesday. For those of us who actually have jobs.
But either way, there's people that are talking about these things.
Did you wanna make a motion, Chris?
Uh I make a motion that the Technology Committee puts together a meeting for the residents to discuss the broadband providers.
Second? I'll second it. Um so they'll ask a variety of broadband providers and then we'll see where this goes. I would just like to get everybody in a room and ask, get a straight answer to some of these questions. Because I'm amazed at the difference in answers from the same company, so.
Embarrassing.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, it passes. Fire Department updates. I don't have anything for you tonight. Um Zach is on vacation. He will be in front of us in March. There are some changes to their um um I call them bylaws that they, but it's not bylaws that they go by and a little bit change in how the chief is approved. Most um municipalities are going forward that even though the chief of the fire department may be chosen by the firefighters, it ha- it is being approved by the the municipal boards because they have to answer to the board. So that's kind of something that's happening across the state, making sure that the chief is a direct answer to the board rather than an answer to his firefighters, which is a little bit different than the way it's been. It won't change anything. It just puts him underneath the board, which I think is the way Hudson does it and others that have their own fire departments are all doing it this way. I know the Somerset is.
Well, the cities are required to have police and fire commissions.
Right, they have commissions.
That hire, yeah, that hiring fire, but you're right. I mean, it's a, it's a question of are they selected by their members or are they
Yes.
selected by the governing board?
Right. So they can make a recommendation to us and then we would just approve it.
In our population, their population, it says, it's a population plan that comes in their population number.
Not when it comes to us approving the the chief. Right, okay, so that'll be on next. Update on maintenance issues. Um Chris is here. We had a leak here in the roof from the drain over here above the kitchen cabinet that discolored one of our tiles and we had the company out that did the roofing who informed us that they should have been called back after the roof was installed for six months to a year and had the drains tightened down because the way this roof is put on, there's a piece of the drain that's kinda over the top of the rubberized roof and one that's underneath it that compresses.
Ba- basically, each roof drain is kinda like a floor drain. It's bolted to the bottom of our ceiling and then drains down. When they did the roof, maybe one or all were not readjusted after maintenance. After the roof was put on.
Yeah, so the bill in there that we're approving tonight is for approximately five hundred dollars. I did talk to the foreman of that crew, of the people that were out here. And he recommended that after the snow is off the building, that they come back out and inspect all the rest of them. And once they're tightened down, the way they tighten them, they don't ever have to come back again. This is only after the installation that they should have returned, but no one called them to come back.
So here's my question on that whole topic. We had the roof, the roof people and then other drain people, another
It's the roof people.
Same contractor?
Yeah. Yeah.
And and what was their conversation about standing behind us?
They told me that it was up to the town to have called them back and the town was informed at the time that they were supposed to do that. So whoever they talked to here, none of those people are here anymore. So I did make an appointment with them that as soon as
No, but if I have their contract, I'm gonna pull it out and look.
So as soon as the snow is off the building, they're gonna come back out and look at all of the drains and make sure they're good.
Yeah.
I got up here today on the ladder and pulled out a ceiling tile and cut it and put it in, so the old yucky one is gone. And it was a limited amount of leaking. It was only about this big, so it wasn't huge. But it's done and it's dry, cause I got up in there and it's dry up there, so I'm happy to report that.
I am, since it is one company, I am gonna say, they know the day they pulled off this, this, this job, they said this job was finished. They knew that if there, there was supposed to be follow-up on it, they knew that part. They also know we paid for this. And to, for them to come back and say it's our responsibility to call them up and tell them to come back and straighten out their scuttles and their those drains that are up there kinda sticks in my craw because those, those drain problems were what got them out here and
I know.
How we found out we needed a roof in the first place.
And I understand that, but at this stage, you're five, six years out of that, five years out, eighteen, I think.
Well, we need, we need the drains fixed, there isn't any question.
And I, and I just think at this point, we're gonna have to have this looked at and get done with it and move on.
Okay.
I, I mean, you can fight over this, but it's five hundred bucks right now.
Oh, that's fine.
And I'm just like
I'll pay it five hundred bucks, but on the other hand, it's kind of a pretty way to do business.
Fix though.
The fix is they go up there and they, and and this drain comes up and this piece comes down and they compress them.
Yeah.
And it doesn't ever have to be done again.
It's like it's like the, it's like the piece under your tub. Yeah, you gotta crimp it down to make a seal. And then it goes, it drinks, right?
He talked to them, so.
It's not just tightening bolts. Is it just tight?
Yeah, it is. It is, it's, it's a a sandwich. So this is your roof membrane, this device that's your drain clamps to it, the bolts are on top. And I was out there and they, they were wiggly and just weeping. Right? So then he, he had informed me, well, this is something that we
Should have done.
Should have looked at uh months after we did this and I'm like, oh wow, I don't have an answer.
I'll go up there and tape up.
The trouble is, it's as a rubber roof and are you gonna guarantee that you tighten them up correctly, that we don't ruin that roof?
That's exactly the point.
That's my fear. That roof is
Educational piece.
I mean, there's a hundred thousand dollar roof on that building.
Oh yeah.
No.
Yeah, this isn't going, this, no. That's what I said, this kinda sticks in my craw.
I know, I'm with you.
I said on several roof roof meetings.
So we'll see what they say when they come out.
And to get the hundred thousand dollars to fix roof that we had buckets sitting all over.
Yeah. So I appreciate the offer, but
But thank you, but you know, they're gonna come back and get into the job they started.
Okay, ARPA funding, I keep this on here, but there's nothing to present to you tonight. Um, the next thing on here is public, I'm sorry. I know, public records request. Um, she gave you the list over there, the public records request continue. And so she has the list on on the clipboard back there. So if you wanna look at them, they're there. Um, the transfer of alcohol beverage license from Landmark to Consumers Cooperative. So Landmark, Burkhart Co-op, whatever you wanna call it, is now changing hands again. So their um their um principal is the same. But they're changing the rest, right? So they're asking for a transfer to um the new name is Consumers Co-op Burkhart C Store.
Teresa, since you're holding the formal document, could you please make the motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the transfer of the Class A license retail license for the sale of fermented malt beverages and or intoxicating liquor from the um Landmark Co-op to the Consumers Co-op Burkhart C Store. Is there a second?
Second.
They did pay their fee, so they're all set to go. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. And then we have two oh, we did those already. Sorry, I got those done. Then we have um I'm gonna do that, but I'm gonna come back to this. So we have the resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two amending the budget. Um, so this is right here in the paperclip on your table. And I just want you to be aware that you have two spreadsheets here. The top one is what you approved on November twenty-two. And the second one is the one with corrections. So I'm just gonna give a little background. Um, this spreadsheet was developed many years ago and a variety of people had their hands on it. And unbeknownst to Terry, she thought she had it all correct. There were some additions that were incorrect in the spreadsheet. She has since corrected them all. And in the future, she will enter this into QuickBooks, which is where she found the mistake, cause when you enter the numbers into QuickBooks, it did not match the spreadsheet. So in the future, she will do that before the November budget meeting, so we won't have this issue in the future. So we're required by um state statute to amend our twenty twenty-three budget and as you can see that um the total general government expenditures were four oh one nine fifty, should have been four oh six nine fifty. It was off five thousand. The total public work expenditures is one nine one six seven seven one, should have been one nine two four four hundred. And Conservation and Development was the one that was off considerably, cause one number did not add in. It went from eighty-seven thousand to one twenty-five. So on this budget, we're saying that the additional sum of fifty thousand six two nine is hereby transferred from line number four nine two zero zero, transfer in from the general fund receipt account to balance this budget. If you choose not to do it this way, that means you would have to readjust your expenditures. But if you remember this year, we were over five hundred thousand dollars to the good that we did not use in our budget. So stating this sum would be transferred from into the, from the general fund account to balance, doesn't mean we're actually gonna use it. It just means that it balances. You cannot have a you cannot have a budget that does not balance as an approval that we did. So this requires two-thirds board approval. And I spoke for you, but maybe you'd like to add something to this. Okay. You all had a chance to look at it. None of us took our calculator out and edited it all up. But do you wanna state that you've been through this whole thing upside down and sideways now?
Yeah, I have been through it upside down, sideways and front and back.
Yeah.
So, Terry, I guess I'll ask it this way. If the cause we haven't made the motion yet. Motion is made. Does QuickBooks state with the transfer of fifty thousand six hundred twenty-nine dollars, does it tie out?
Does it balance?
Does it balance?
Yes.
In QuickBooks?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So
Anyone else have any questions? Go ahead.
My question is, does the QuickBook balance match this Excel spreadsheet or is the case those who never truly match?
It did not match the November twenty-two because she did not put it into QuickBooks until January.
And then, yes, and we, we took action, we, we discussed this in January.
Well, we found out about it, but we hadn't gotten to the bottom of it and we needed to get this resolution developed so we could do it the right way. I had a talk to the WTA about the resolution to make sure we were doing it correctly. So then she balanced it based on what she, cause when you enter the numbers in QuickBooks, QuickBooks does not lie, obviously. And the spreadsheet lied.
Hate that spreadsheet.
I know, she hates the spreadsheet, but it's the only way to get your budget done. So I will make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-three dash oh two, amending the twenty twenty-three budget adopted by the town board of the town of St. Joseph to add an additional sum of fifty thousand six two nine to be transferred from line item four nine two zero zero in from the general fund receipt account to balance the twenty twenty-three budget. Is there a second? Is there a second? Any other discussions?
So it's either do this or we go back and, and. Reevaluate the numbers in the budget to match the, the other number.
That's right. That's your two choices. So in essence, your expenses came out higher than you anticipated. That you thought you were putting in the budget because that spreadsheet did not add up correctly.
Well, really, you're just correcting an error.
We're correcting an error, that's all we're doing.
That's all you're doing by the resolution.
Yeah, I realized that we're correcting the error, but.
And I mean. I realize that there have been boards that have spent every dime of the budget they allocated, but. Not while I've been chair, have we'd ever done that. There's always been money that's kicked back into the general fund.
That's the way it should.
And that's the way it should be. So this is a roll call vote. Are you gonna? Write on there. Do you wanna write on that one when they, when you call their vote? Cause they have to roll call this one, because it has to be two thirds majority. Okay, go ahead. I'm gonna ask for the roll call vote.
Okay.
Terry won't make a mistake again.
So what happens is, is that you've amended. This, this. November twenty-two budget that you approved at the budget meeting was incorrect. So now you're amended it. Unless you spend all that money, it won't really matter. It's just a placeholder to speak of. Cause we've already said in the original budget that we were transferring. Um, twelve thousand seven thirty-nine ninety-two in to balance the budget. And we normally do that because you never spend it all.
So going back to, so my question that I'm struggling with, that I don't. Understand is. Next year, will this number in fact have been increased? By this fifty thousand six hundred and twenty-nine dollars so on here.
So it should say three eight eight nine two three five two point six seven.
So this number will in fact be different next year because that number, the new number for tonight carries over for.
Yeah.
That, that, not, this new number tonight is gonna be right here.
At the top.
Yep.
Yeah. Cause we've amended the budget.
So anyone that takes this document and does not have tonight's action isn't gonna. Pick up.
That's, yeah.
They may not pick up that that amendment was made tonight.
And we can state that at the next budget meeting and state that we did this. But the next budget meeting will have to do with the new budget.
Yeah.
Twenty-four.
I know, but this number still, it will still carries over from one year to the next. So this becomes the new number.
But this is the new number.
The number tonight becomes the number as opposed to the November twenty twenty-two.
Because that's what you're doing. You're amending your budget.
Right.
So everyone got their answers, so we can do roll call vote. Go ahead.
All right, Chris Marshall?
Yes.
Lloyd DeRosa?
Yes.
Rick Coldness? Teresa Johnson?
Yes.
Stefan Cruz?
And it passes, so you can say yes to each, yeah, eyes to each of those. Okay. Um. At the last meeting that we had, we went through some reviews and we. I've brought forward to you the wording for the RFP. I said I would do that for you tonight. We made a motion, she sent out an RFP, and now that is on your website, on your, um. Um, drive to. Take a look at that. I don't know where I'm at here. I'm lost track. I'm lost track.
My question is, so at the last meeting for the. Uh, reviews, the board took action in requesting an RFP come?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, for animal control. So does anyone have any changes they want made on this? Otherwise, we will have her send it out tomorrow.
I'm gonna move that, the motion that was made. On, um. The last motion that put this forward, that that motion be rescinded.
You, you cannot rescind. You have to have, uh, place on the agenda that asks for you to do a. Um, oh my goodness.
You can't do a reconsideration. Too much time has gone by.
No, no.
So we, but a rescind can be asked at any time by anyone.
This is your next, according to our town rules, this is your next regular meeting. So the reconsideration should have been placed on this meeting and it can only be done by the prevailing voters.
So.
So you were not the prevailing side.
Correct.
Okay, so.
So I misinterpreted Robert's rules.
As.
Yeah, cause I would tell you.
Receive that, because otherwise I'd have a rescind.
Um, I guess here's my question. What role of us to wanna do an RFP?
Well, what's put me in that position was two things. Number one, we had an unlicensed facility. For September, October, November and part of December. That animals were going to, and I had a letter from the state stating that.
Never seen that, Teresa, and why?
It'll be in your drive for consideration when you do this RFP. So she had no license until December. They were supposed to be licensed in September. They did not get licensed in September. I talked to the gentleman from the Department of Ag, because I looked every month on the website to see who was licensed. And all of a sudden, their name dropped off.
So where?
Facility was not licensed for those three and a half months.
So where's the documentation saying that that license wasn't there? And how come? We didn't find out sooner?
I asked her, it happened right before the meeting. He sent me the documentation the day after the meeting. But if you notice, I asked her that. And she said, well, they got it in December. And I said, why did the website not show their name in September, October, November? She goes, and she said to you straight out, I don't know. There must be a mistake. So I had put a call into the Department of Ag, as with any governmental agencies, it takes a while to get somebody to call you back. And he called me back the next day. I asked him to put it in writing and it'll be in your drive.
Stating that they were unlicensed for that period of time?
Yes.
Are they?
They are licensed as of December thirtieth.
There, that's my question. I'm not saying that excuses the unlicensed.
No, it doesn't.
But I'd like clarification on the data.
Right, I will make sure you get it. And then the second thing was, I questioned her about a charge of three hundred and sixty dollars for a stray cat.
Two sixty.
I'm sorry, two sixty, thank you. And she told us that we were. Bill too much for it. And yet, if you looked at her bill this month, she did not give us a credit for it.
And I like, um, this is a good conversation and I'm going to go back to. I'm gonna. Here's my question. Because this is a very small contract, are we required by law to go out for an RFP? Or if in fact, it is in our purview. To. Hire someone else without going into an RFP because we know we only have a choice of two. And I think there's, so I'd like some explanation on how that works, because we don't. It's not a matter of, of, we have to take. The lowest bidder.
No, we don't.
And there's circumstances where. Maybe you can help, or as our attorney, maybe you can help me out on some of our choice. What's some of our options on how to approach this?
Before the answers, though, I wanted to know that the board made a motion to go to RFP, so now you can.
Well, let, let me just say two things. And first, to answer your question, you're not required to go out for, for bid for service contracts. Um, so you're not required to do it. That being said, the item on your agenda tonight.
Right.
Is approved wording of RFP for animal control services. So really, you know, this, this isn't about one particular provider or another. The agenda item is, do you have changes to the RFP as provided in your, your drive? And if you're good with it, vote to approve it. And whomever wants to apply for that RFP, whether it be your current provider or other providers, they, they can submit. And then you can take your, your action from there. But sole action tonight, based on the agenda, should just be approval or consideration of the RFP line.
Okay, does that help you?
Well, it helps with my education. I guess I would ask to. Review the legal documents before I approve doing out for an RFP, but that's, that's my opinion. But I don't know that I can.
It's pretty.
For a thirty.
I can tell you that it's pretty generic as we have RFPs. And I also took a look at the one that was done at the city of New Richmond, which is very similar, but much more detailed than this, because they have a lot more going on there. So I think, you know, this is pretty. Much close to what we had originally and where we are now.
Well, really, there, there are no legal.
No, I'm talking about the statement that the person was on in.
I'll make, I'll make sure you get that.
Yeah, but I've, what I'm saying is, I'd like to see that in writing and understand the story. I wasn't there.
Right.
Rick wasn't there. So both him and I are like, what happened at the meeting then? Because we weren't told this until I saw it in the drive and then I'm sitting here. So from my perspective, I just wanted to figure out, okay, what's the story? What's the full history on this? And then if it makes sense, go to an RFP. I don't know, but I've had to deal with the animal control a few times. It's always been a, a good experience from my perspective as a, as a.
But we're not talking about that now. We're talking about whether we're gonna approve this language to go to RFP. Cause we've already made the motion to go.
Okay.
The board has already made that motion.
So I'm just gonna put because the, because the minutes only say that. The motion passed. There were only three board members there and two out of three voted. To go to RFP and one being me did not, but that's not stated. So. The, our instructions are to re. Very, as have been said. Do you approve the language, yes or no?
That's it.
That's, yeah, so if.
And the factor means whether there's three.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
I'm just stating how it.
What I was trying to point out is you had two members over here who were both like, what happened with these guys? So that's why I'm trying to figure it out, because we're like. So I, I'll make a motion that I approve the wording of the current RFP. Uh, as stated in the Google Drive for sending out for animal control services.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second it for any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
I wanna see all the paperwork.
But wait a minute, this is not your choice now.
Yeah.
Okay. You, you guys have to back up.
Okay, back up.
You voted not to send this wording out.
Okay.
So what's the wording you wanna send out? Cause you can't rescind the motion the board made on RFP.
Yeah, you can't rescind it.
You can't. In your drive. Because the motion is already made to do it. You can't rescind that motion and you can't. It wasn't, it was not noticed on this agenda for reconsideration, which is what is required under our rules. So without a reconsideration, the RFP stands. So either you send out this motion, you send. We took out the vote on January twenty-first.
Whenever they had the reviews.
Reviews.
Okay, at a regular or special.
At a special board meeting. So this is the next regular meeting after that.
And if, if that was an action of the board.
Yes, it was.
To go out. Provider can respond. And in fact, I would tell you that. New Richmond went out for RFP and their current provider responded and another provider responded and they went through the process there. So. I mean, it's, this is the next.
One on the prevailing side want to do a reconsideration of that motion?
Wait, that's only you and.
I'm not the prevailing, that's your four.
Yeah, this thing.
Four.
Oh, you voted yay?
Yes, I'm, I'm the one.
I've done this.
Must have not.
Okay, so come back to this. Four of you are on the prevailing side. Does anyone wish to? Ask for this motion to be reconsidered?
Can I add one thing to this?
Not until you have a reconsideration of a motion.
Well, no, or he, or he could make a new motion to approve.
This is the change.
With some amendment.
Gotta get it right. Approve the wording of the RFP for animal control services. But inside the scope. Uh, of service on line two, that they also provide. Um, how do I wanna say this? Like, uh, either a video or at least photo documentation.
And what line were you stating that that was gonna go on? Cause it's one, two.
I was talking about two and. I think the, or the. Two. Well, two I for the first part and two. Provide documentation to town clerk. And treasurer of animal complaints. And then basically there would be. Uh, a, a K on there as well, that would be just photos of where, a photo or videos of where the animals would be held or. If it's a floating kind of thing, yeah, some kind of documentation.
So that would be K, H I J K.
Yep.
Okay. Anything else? Um, that was his motion. Is there a second to that?
And I think it's the second, yes.
Okay. Anything else from anyone?
We don't have to do anything with that four to one motion?
No.
No.
We'll be on that.
All right. All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, everyone. That was a tough one. Okay, on to cattle licenses. You have two of them in front of you. You have one for the Gilbertsons and one for the, um. Mary Tyson and John Ringhofer.
I make a motion to approve the cattle license for John and Kimberly Gilbertson at thirteen seventy-five Foxridge Trail.
Second. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Next one.
I make a motion that we approve the cattle license for Mary Tyson and John Ringhofer at. Three seven six one hundred seventeenth Avenue.
Second, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, and that passes. And then on to approval of town board minutes. There's two of them, I believe.
The dates are.
One twelve.
Um.
And one nineteen.
One twelve, one nineteen.
I'm making a motion to approve the town board minutes for January twelfth, twenty-three. I make a motion to approve the town board minutes for January nineteenth, twenty-three.
Second, in second. Second, all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, and it passes. And then expenditure for clerks training. Do you wanna speak to that quick?
Reformers, um, the next clerk's training for me was in July, so it's the week of July seventeen. And the cost of this.
At the fossil gardens?
No, this one is virtual, because it's.
Oh, easy.
It's for a week. It used to be in Green Bay, but now they're doing virtually, so it's a week.
And it is four hundred and ninety-nine dollars.
I make a motion to approve the training for. Ex, for, uh, the town clerks. Training and costs of four ninety-nine.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion regarding that part of it?
What's the word?
I'm getting to the board next.
Okay.
All those in favor say aye. Opposed, you should have gotten your February. W T magazine and in there is the newest workshops. Um, there is one in Eau Claire on February twenty-fifth and one in Cumberland on April first. Those are probably the two closest to us. It's sixty-five dollars if it's paid for ten days in advance. I just wanted a motion from the board to approve anyone who wishes to go to these, that they can go do so.
So we have Eau Claire on February and Cumberland on April.
Yeah, it's in the magazine.
Yeah.
I would make a motion for costs covered for board members for the WTA training.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion?
While we're on this topic, I would like to attend the Cumberland meeting.
Okay, he wants to attend the Cumberland one.
I'm just, I'm sorry, I still don't even have the WTA magazine or emails, nothing.
Oh, you need to talk to her and get on there, because.
She tried twice. I don't know if it's just a black hole somewhere or what.
No, can we give them a call tomorrow and figure it out? Okay, anything else from anyone? Otherwise, I'll take a most, a vote. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Um, I do not have an appointment yet for Parks, Trails, and Rec or the Board of Appeals. I need one for each of those. So if you know someone that could be that, that would be great. And I'm asking for approval tonight for the secretary for the Board of Appeals and Plan Commission. Terry has decided to step up and do that in addition to her other duties. Um, we have advertised this at seventy five dollars a meeting. So if you wish for her to do it, that would be something that we would be able to pay her.
I make a motion that we approve for the clerk to oversee the secretarial pieces of the Board of Appeals and the Plan Commission.
At seventy five dollars a meeting?
At seventy five dollars a meeting.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in fa, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes.
Thank you, Terry.
Thank you very much. Budget invoices and bank balances, just so you are understanding, we um are um just did payouts for taxes, so we got the money from the county, so that's all flowing in and out of our um, bank accounts. And our checks are all on here. There was one voided check that you saw up on top because of a wrong number given to us by county for what was owed to them. There is one charge on here that you should be aware of, and that is check number two, three, nine, zero, five. So two thousand nine hundred and six dollars and eighty cents. This is for um, the road off of Thirtieth. There was a hazardous waste dumped there.
What was it?
I have to look on.
Like a dirty old couch or something?
No, no, no.
Be the one heavens of a dirty old gut.
Dirty old gut would be nothing. It's in the new, yeah. It got dumped in there. Two, three, nine.
Who was contacted for that?
The um, fire department was contacted because they recalled, responded to a hazmat call at one, two, nine, Dalia State's Court for a tote of asphalt-like material. They had to have X Environmental respond, because they had to dispose of it. There were no witnesses or parties that were aware of what had happened. And of course, the town gets billed for it for two to twenty nine hundred dollars.
That's I, I want a phone call next time, man.
Okay, I will tell them that. But it was hazardous waste, and I know this has happened before in the town. Last time it happened, last time it happened, we were able to catch them in the act. I'm sorry, what? Yeah, I was on my road. I come home from work and they're dumping stuff down the ditch, and I, I go, who are you? What are you doing? He goes, well, we're working in Hudson, and we're dumping this out here, because we can't dump it in Hudson. I said, well, I would like this very much. I went to, 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 I need a sheriff out here. And so they had to do the whole cleanup. Because it was a sludge.
County has a listed on their site as a hazardous waste company that you can go take stuff to.
Who is this? County, Sincere County on their website.
I know, but they're talking to these people with these great big tankers that are running around with whatever they're doing, and they're dumping this stuff. So I'm just making you aware that that's on there, just so you're aware that that'll be charged, that we have to pay that bill.
Do we know when that was reported?
Well, I'd have, it was on the bill.
That's the first day I've heard of this.
It was on the bill.
Did you go look at it, Todd?
No.
Well, if it was just asphalt shit, that ain't nothing.
It was asphalt.
Told it asphalt.
Like. Like. Whatever they were dumping my ditch was not asphalt. There was something else. Who knows?
And, and that, I'm just speaking tonight that if it's a solid, that's something that can be handled real easily and much more affordable. Granted, they're making a living, but I'm saying for the town sake.
Right. Well, I'll make sure that Zach knows, he can give you a buzz, but obviously, if it's something you don't know what it is, we're gonna have to pay to have someone.
Uh, that's, that's fine. I, I just was, I'm just.
Baffled, I know. I'll make a motion to approve um, check numbers two, three, eight, seven, four to two, three, nine, three, nine, including all fund transfers and um, I don't see any ACHs on here for um withholdings. But you'll be doing those next, I presume.
Tomorrow.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any other discussion regarding that? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, it passes. Um, you wanted on here the review process for um um, employees and contractors, and that was you, Lori?
Yeah.
Did you come up with anything that you wanted to have discussed?
I would like, if I could have this re-agenda, I'd like to kind of write down a basic, what I'm what, what my thought process is on that.
Okay.
But rather than me trying to explain it or talk about it tonight.
Okay. Um, anything for the next agendas? We have um, the half marathon people are coming. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, sir. Yeah. Yeah. I said, I said there was nothing on there for Arva. And I said on public records, the sheet is over here for the board to be aware of. The public records keep, the requests keep coming. So. I was gonna say, I think I did do that. Anything else from anyone? Um, if that's the case, we are gonna go into closed session, so we're gonna ask you all to leave.
I want to make a motion.
Uh, I make a motion to go into closed session per section nineteen point eight five, parent one, parent G of the Wisconsin statute to confer with legal counsel. Second.
Uh, Teresa Johnson.
Yes.
Rick Colbass.
Yeah.
Justin Cruz.
Hi.
Lori DeRosa.
Yes.
Chris Marshall.
Yep.
We are going into closed session. Thank you, everyone online. Yeah, we can unlock it. I mean, I don't know that there's any action we're taking, but we can unlock it. Yeah, yeah, well, let you in.